Courtney?
Yes.
Okay, alright, good. So we'll call this meeting to order. The April 27th, 2023 Lander County Commission Meeting. All times of this, on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time.
This conference will now be recorded.
Public comment is designed for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until that matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commission Board Meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of a potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 241-0153B2. So I'll call this meeting to order. And Bill, would you lead us in the pledge today?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners' reports. Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Kathy?
No report, thank you.
Kathy?
None, thank you.
Okay, do you have?
Nothing to report.
Okay, no report. We'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Staff, yeah, we're on staff reports.
There are zero reports from our commission, I apologize.
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioner. I apologize, I didn't realize you guys moved through so fast. Some of this report I will save for the end because I believe that it was at the request of Commissioner Chop that I would give some of the data on employee retention. But I did attend the Pool Pack Annual Meeting this last week, and I strongly recommend that if we can get some of the commissioners and department heads to attend this next year, that they do, because the amount of information is overwhelming in the two days that they, that they give. And some of the things that stuck out to me is on insurance. From 2017 to current, some of the, some of the data they've seen, they've, they've never seen it since the Depression in 1913. It's, the numbers are off the charts. They're seeing anywhere from 25% to 40% increases is not uncommon in insurance. A lot of it is because we're part of a pool of 17 states that also includes, you know, multiple counties. And right now, they're calling it a hard market. So a hard market is when they will not allow you, if you, if you leave a pool, other pools will not allow you to join their pool because you can contaminate their pool, and they, they just can't take the risk of it. Between the freeze in Texas a couple of years ago to the hurricanes and things happening in Florida, and then the heavy winter that we had this year, they're seeing jacked up rates from all kinds of different things happening with floods and, and other things. So it's, it's a pretty volatile market. The only ones that did not increase were the ones that were pre-bought and were going to be held for a couple of years. But them have been held for their couple of years, and they're coming to term this next year, so we're going to see some increases. Then they also went into bonds and stocks, and how we purchase them, and where they purchase them, and how long they hold the funds, and how that looks for the pool itself and for individual counties like ourselves. So I think it's very important that we get some commissioners to go show up to these things and see how interest rates affect the bonds. It's kind of like a teeter totter. When one goes up, the other one goes down, and vice versa. It's a whole lot of information that I would love to share when we have a little bit more time, because I have a boatload of notes on it. But the, the couple of things that stuck out in a comment that I wrote down here is it's not if, it's how long and how deep the recession will be. They say that if they aren't saying we're in one now, that it's certainly coming just based off of the numbers. They can't, there's no other way to see it. They had people that flew in from France. They had people that flew in from Germany. They had them from Paris. People all over that are investors that go hit these global markets and invest for us and look at what the returns are, and they try to make that work for, for everybody. So these speakers that were speaking are speaking on a global market that will later reflect back down to us. And I thought that that was pretty important. Let me see. Outside of that, I think the majority of everything else I have on the agenda, and then the remainder, I will update at the end of the meeting when Commissioner Chop is here, because it's reflective of, of his questions.
Alright, thank you, Bernie. So we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there any public comment? Okay. We'll move into the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of April 27th, 2023 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of March 15th, 2023 Special Budget Shop, Budget Workshop Minutes. Three, approval of March 16th, 2023 Special Budget Workshop Minutes. Four, approval of March 23rd, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Five, approval of April 13th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. And six, approval of payroll change request. We need to pull number one and number six. And is there a motion?
We're pulling number six, why?
Oh, sorry, you're correct. We're not pulling six, sorry.
We're not?
No.
Okay, well.
I misspoke. So the only one we're going to pull is number one.
Alright, alright. I make a motion that we approve number two, number three, and number six.
Okay, we have motions, or second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, so on number one, item number 12, it says feral horses, and it should read wild horses and burrows.
If that's the only change, I make a motion we approve number one. Our agenda notice has been amended.
A second.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we'll move into number one. Commissioners, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove payment of bills, we'll need to pull check number 219-398.
I'll make the motion that we pay the rest of the bill.
Okay, we have a motion.
A second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye. I make a motion we approve check number 219-398.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I abstain from it. That check is made to my employer. So we'll move into two. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the interlocal contract between public agencies, the state of Nevada acting by and through its Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Division, Nevada Division of Forestry and Lander County. Good morning.
Want to mention Marcus Lesbo?
Yeah, just pushed the very front, there you go. Yeah. There we go.
Marcus Lesbo, Fire Management Officer, Nevada Division of Forestry, for the record. Again, good morning, and thank you for having me. I'm here to present the contract for fiscal year 2425 between Nevada Division of Forestry and, excuse me, Lander County. Two-year contract for the Wildland Fire Protection Program, and answer any questions that you may have for me, or present it if you don't know what it is, so.
Well, we have a, is a significant increase.
Correct.
And why do we see that increase?
So fiscal year 2021, the contract was 208,044. And then last year, the last two years, due to COVID, lack of fires, we brought the contract back down. It, it went way down to 88,817, and then this year it went up roughly about 17,400. We are required by the state of Nevada to get to a certain amount, which is 1.85 million, to be able to cover contracts across the state of Nevada. And when we look at risk, it's basically an insurance program for you guys at the Lander County. When we look at risk, high fire danger the last 10 years, fire history, this is what we came out with. Everybody's contract this year went up a little bit. But with that, we also, two years ago, we were running, we were running three engines and two crews out of the north. This year, we've added 30, or we're in the process of adding 35 career firefighters to help combat the issues that we have with fire season. And then with the winter that we have coming, obviously, you know, most people know that with the heavy winter that we're looking at potentially another heavy fire season coming this year after three downs. So cost of business, the, the, the cost of fires going way up is hitting us pretty hard in the state. So this is just to kind of offset that a little bit.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner, you, you may want to open up the next item as well. I believe that was some of the questioning is whether they overlapped or not.
Yeah, so we will also open up item three to be heard for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the operating plan between Lander County Fire Protection District and United States Department of the Interior Bureau of Land Management, Battle Mountain District, Elko District. We have both items open now.
Hi, hey there. I forgot to come up here. You want Mr. Lesbo? Tim Howell, Fire Management Officer for Battle Mountain BLM.
So this one is five years, right?
So, so no, ma'am, the, the, the operating plan between Lander County and the BLM is, there, there is no money whatsoever associated with this.
No, no, I know that, but the, the operating plan is for five years, right?
It, it is, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that, that was my question.
And to be revisited every year.
Yeah, because no, that's, it's predicated on a spine, the, the, the contract for the fire prevention with the Forest Service.
Correct.
Okay.
The, the language with my operating plan tears off of NDFs.
Got it.
Any other questions from the commission? Ron, did you have any questions on, on these?
Well, I was unable to see to the contract. So if you guys are okay with it, it stayed pretty much the same as it has in the past in the world where I live.
Okay.
Did it change, anything change?
No, there was a, there's a couple of things that did change in the local operating contract, but that's pretty much for, the WFPP involves all 17 counties across the state, including some municipal departments. So some of it changed with departments that have full-time staff and billing, but nothing, we still, the state of Nevada still pays for any fire that goes beyond the first 24 hours for Lander County. You guys will never see a bill. Mr. Ramos is signatory to the cost shares between BLM and NDF. So the, the 117,000, or 106,000, excuse me, covers your guys' in, I mean, if you have a fire that costs $10 million, Lander County will never see, will never see a bill for that, so.
That's on the NDF side, am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. On the BLM side, did anything change on that contract?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Alright, is there any questions or comments from the public? Okay.
I'll make a motion we approve the interlocal contract between public agencies, the state of Nevada acting by and through its Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, Nevada Division of Forestry and Lander County. And this is for services at a cost of $106,251 for fiscal year 2024, and $106,251 for state fiscal year 2005, not to exceed $212,502 for the two-year contract.
So that was 2025, correct? I thought you said 2005.
You said 2005.
2025.
Okay.
Did I mumble the two? Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Alright.
Alright. Then I'll make a motion that we approve the operating plan between Lander County Fire Protection District and the United States Department of the Interior Bureau of Land Management, Battle Mountain District, Elko District.
A second.
Yeah, with motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, gentlemen. So we'll move into four. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove disposing of non-real estate property in Lander County's possession that can't be sold on public surplus sale.
Morning, guys.
Morning, Chris.
Morning. You want me to start? This is, go ahead. This is for the vehicles we have over there that don't have titles to them. We want to be able to sell a few of them with a bill of sales. There's two Toyotas, Jeep Comanche, and two semi-trailers, water, old water tankers. We can't, do not have titles for.
Um, so commissioners, we put this back before you, and we did advertise this in the paper like we were supposed to. So now we are looking to move forward on what this commission would like us to do with these vehicles. A lot of them, the wrecking yard has put a bid on some of them. Most of them are junk, and we would like to see go to the wrecking yard. That said, there's two Toyotas and a Comanche over there that we could do the bonded vehicle title process to put those on the surplus sale. If we could take those out of the bid that the wrecking yard gave us and sell those on the surplus, we'd appreciate that, and approval to sell the rest of the wrecking yard. Okay, that's the vehicles. With that, there are two water tankers over there that we don't have titles to, that we would like to put on the surplus. One was given to us by the BLM, and the other one, we don't have a title to. But maybe with our legal advice, one way or another, if we could sell those with just a bill of sale, because we have been approached by some ranching families that would like to use those water tankers to water cattle, or to take, bring water to their cattle now. It would still go through the same surplus process. Anyone could bid on it, anyone could buy it. It's not saying that the families that have approached us that want to buy it would get it or are guaranteed to have it, but they would have the opportunity to bid on it if we put it in the surplus sale.
Okay. So, so we're dealing with the vehicles, so let's tackle that first. I, I'm fine with that suggestion. I think we need to keep the two Toyotas and the Jeep Comanche off, because I think we can recoup some more money than what their salvage amount was. And then the rest of the stuff, it looks to me like it's pretty well better off salvaged. And then on the trailers, so Bill, can we sell trailers that we don't have the title on? Can we sell them with just, just a bill of sale?
I don't think you can just quick sell them with the bill of sale. I think you need to go through that, that same approval process, that bonded vehicle title, I believe.
And we could try that too, and see where that goes.
And once you've got the title, then yeah, I would suggest going that route. But otherwise, it could be a headache down the road. So one of them was given. Quick comment, thank God for this law. It was five years ago, but I remember wrestling with this type of nonsense when I was Justice of the Peace, and long before that. It's, it, they've now got a system. It takes three years before you're in the clear, but they've got a system for dealing with vehicles with no titles, so that all these vehicles that are scattered out and ranch lands and stuff can get re-titled if somebody wants to try to restore them or something.
So you said one of the trailers was given to us by BLM?
Yep.
And what was the other?
It was an old water tanker.
Was it from the county?
Yeah, it was from the county.
Did the county purchase it?
I, I believe so. It's, it, they're old, and they cannot find titles for them.
Okay.
We even went through the DMV for titles, and they can't find.
Okay. To where these people that have an interest in them that want to use them just for watering cattle, they won't be licensed. If we had a letter from BLM stating the release of that vehicle in Lander County, the same, because one of the trailers, could we forego doing the whole title search for them?
Probably.
Yeah, because the people that show, have interest, they don't want to license them, they just want to keep them out at the ranch and, and, and water livestock.
Yeah, they're not, they're not interested, yeah.
DOT wouldn't sign off for those trailers going down the highway.
I was going to say that would be a problem. And then the other question would be, you really need to do something to make sure they're not stolen. I mean, you know, I'm sure that somebody's already checked that, but just being certain.
Well, being, that was, we're, one being from BLM and the other from our own county. I'm pretty sure they're not stolen.
They're not stolen. I, we probably do have been checked, though.
Anyway, alright, is there any questions, discussion? Any public comment or questions? Alright, was there a motion?
All this motion that we have approved that disposing of non-real estate property in Lander County's possession, that can't be sold on public surplus.
I'll send you a motion.
Okay, and then do we want to put in there that we're excluding from the list the two Toyotas and the one Jeep Comanche and the two trailers? Should that be part of the motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's interesting.
Okay.
We'll make the motion affect that.
Okay, so we have a motion, second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so number five. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the appointment of one individual to serve on the Lander County Planning Commission, which currently has two openings. New terms are from April 27th, 2023, through June 30th, 2025. And our one candidate is Miranda Tremaine.
Michelle, is Miranda there this morning?
No.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve the appointment of one individual to serve at the Lander County Planning Commission, which currently has two openings. New terms are from April 27th, 2023, through June 30th, 2025. And Miranda Tremaine is the candidate.
Okay, we have a motion?
A second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. We'll move to six. Commissioners, presentation from Brandy Holbrook on the crisis related to foster care and temporary shelter for children in Lander County. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for allowing me to answer today. Has to be green. Thank you for allowing me to present this morning. My name is Brandy Holbrook, and I'm the Social Service Manager for Division of Child and Family Services. I'm based out of the Elko District Office. I've been in child welfare for 20 years out of rural Nevada. I actually live in Cartland, that's where I'm from. And I've been in my current position as a social service manager for five years. It encompasses four rural counties, so Lander County, Elko County, White Pine County, and Eureka County. Is my coverage area, and I have two offices, one in Elko and one in Ely. And this morning, I'm here. April is Child Abuse and Neglect and Awareness Month. Typically, we do pinwells and have activities to try to raise awareness. Unfortunately, this year, I want to talk to you about some real issues that are facing your county and what is happening in Lander County across your, across the entire county. I also want to preface this by, I believe, knowledge is power. And so really, today, I'm here to just give you information. And how you use that and where you move from there, it is going to be up to you and your community. I'm here to represent your most vulnerable population who can't be here to speak today. And that's children who have experienced child abuse and neglect, who may have to be displaced from their homes. I do not have the solutions myself. And so that's why I'm seeking my community leaders to give you this information so that you can see where you can take it and maybe collaborate with me or other counties and communities. What am I talking about? The countywide issue you have is you have nowhere for children to go that must be displaced from their homes. You have zero foster homes. So if a child in Lander County had to be displaced, because my job is to prevent removal, but if I'm unable to do that, and they have to be out of their home, and they don't have a relative or a fictive kin, someone who they know from school or their community, then where will they go? The reality is, I don't know. Children in rural Nevada currently today are staying in hotels. They are staying in hotels. DCFS staff has been stepping up and volunteering to stay there. It was not occurring as consistently as is now. Currently, right now, for the last two months, staff have been rotating in and out of hotel rooms with kids. That's not their job, but they don't see any insight, nor do they know what else to do, because these children literally would be homeless. And it's all ages. So don't, it's not just teenagers. It's, it's, it's younger children. But the day is going to come when there's no staff. They can't do their daytime job, not be at home with their families, and continue to do this. So then where will the kids go? Again, we don't know. So I'm going to break it down for the amount of kids that you actually have. You have six total children in the legal foster care system today. That's a, a point of time. So that could change tomorrow. Last night, we picked up five kids across the two regions that I, I manage, and those five children are in hotels currently. So we upped from two kids in hotels two days ago to seven last night. So one of your children is in a treatment facility in Mineral County. Two of your children are in a foster home in Elko. And then one, um, two of your children are in a relative home in Battle Mountain. So out of your six kids, right? So you have three in, in relative care. But you did have, you don't currently have a child in a motel, but you did. You had a child in a motel for 21 days that staff were roaming. 10 days, yours was 10 days. I have so many kids moving around in and out of hotels. I'm like, I've been talking to all of my counties, but your child was for 10 days and currently is not in a hotel. But again, the stability of that is, at any moment, that could change. So I want to talk to you, I know we've, we've came out and talked, I've talked in years past when I've been in this role, that we have a, a crisis with foster care. We don't have foster homes, and now we're in a state of emergency. So how did we get there? Couple of things are factoring into where we're at right now, the pandemic. We all know, March 15th of 2020, the state shut down. And what did that mean for this population? The, your population that have poverty, addiction, mental health issues? Services weren't available for them, or the jobs that they worked at were closed. What did it mean for the children who were on safety plans? And that, daycares and schools closed. And so what, what did we have during that? We had a lot of closures, and so we decided, or knew, by December 17th, that DCFS was not an office that could be closed. And so staff in that agency, we took to the streets and was delivering the food, because most of the school districts all had food that they would provide, but it needed to be out there. We started checking on kids in in-home safety plans. What did COVID bring? Well, we had one fatality for child abuse and neglect. So one child died. We had one near fatality due to child abuse and neglect. But we had zero children die from COVID. So. I bring this up-
One second, Brandy.
Muted.
Sorry about that.
That's the elevator music, is that my time's up? That's a little, that's a little bit less dramatic than the buzzer in Ely, okay? I like that a lot better, it's a little calmer. The buzzer in Ely singe over the edge. I bring this up because volunteerism is down, so the pandemic affected that as well, right? And the economy, fuel prices, groceries, it's all up. So people who were a one-income family that might have been volunteering to be a foster parent might now have to be a two-income family. And if you were a two-income family that was barely making it before the pandemic, you're, you might be a three or four-income family now. And so you may not even be seeing your own children. So to take in children who have been abused and neglected that have experienced trauma and have higher needs, just the volunteerism is down. Second factor, the opioid crisis, fentanyl. It's a game changer in DCFS world. I told you my job is to prevent removal, it's very difficult to prevent removal if fentanyl is in the home. So we have an increase in kids coming out of the home, a decrease in people who will volunteer, and now you have your children in your community staying in hotels. It's a community crisis. Said I didn't have the solutions, I don't, I have some thoughts of what is needed. We need foster homes desperately in your communities. We need advanced foster homes, people who are willing to take kids with severe trauma. Because now, we know my job is to prevent removal because the worst trauma a child can experience is being removed from their family. It's not in their best interest. I know oftentimes stakeholders and community leaders are like, DCFS never does anything, they never remove these kids. But really, the kids need us to try to help their family let them stay there, because the trauma they experience if we remove them is much worse. But then the second factor, if I remove them from their home, currently today, you have no foster homes. So even, even if I had to remove them from their home, they don't get to stay in their community. They don't get to stay in their school. If they're in therapy, they don't get to remain in that, friends, family. If they're in sports, the new school they're going to go to, they probably have already missed the deadline to get to start that. So we're just compounding trauma upon trauma upon trauma. So we need advanced foster care, right, because these kids need, they, they have more needs than, than just any child. And we need transitional living for sixteen to eighteen-year-olds. If you've raised teenagers, you know that at that age, they're disconnecting from you, they want to be independent. So the last thing they want if they have to be removed from their family home is new mom and dad. So those are the kids that tend to run away or highly disrupt placements. They end up being either in runaway status or in sex trafficking situations. Which, Lander County, one of, in my twenty years, one of my sex trafficking cases was a youth who was out of Battle Mountain that continued to run away and eventually was brought into that sex trafficking world. So it, it's, it's a systematic problem that just continues. I've been presenting, like I said, I've been presenting to all of my community leaders, I don't think this is something that just Lander County commissioners can, can tackle, which is why I'm going to all of my community leaders, all of the commissioners, all the city councils. I believe it's going to take a collaboration between all of the organizations to say, what are we going to do for the kids in northeastern Nevada and the kids in our community? We need an emergency shelter care, that's, that's where we're at now. Washoe County and Clark County have that children's haven and the safeness, or I can't remember, Clark County is right off the top of my head this morning, not enough coffee. But right, that's where you can take a child in the middle of the night, and there's, there's staff waiting to feed them, give them a bed, make sure all their needs are met. And we don't have that in rural Nevada, and we need it desperately, that's where we're at right now. Because kids going into hotels, I don't know, again, how long that'll last, but it certainly, I just told you about all the traumas, now imagine that I look at your little six, seven-year-old and say, and by the way, I don't, I also don't have anywhere for you to go tonight. And you may or may not be in a hotel in the same community in two days, because it's going to depend on where staff is willing and able to step up. And so, those are just some of the things we need, and we need people, like foster care, there's things that communities, when I say collaboration, there's so many things that we can think outside the box, and that's why I'm going to my community leaders, I believe that you probably have some ideas, or at least in collaboration, together we could come up with something that would start to make a difference for, for this population of kids who are coming into care.
Do you have any questions? It's a lovely topic this morning.
Lots of things to say, obviously. From working the sheriff's office and dealing with DCFS for thirty years, this is, unless you see, like, where's, or I, now I'm going to get emotional, this is horrific. But I didn't know child abuse went on until I went to work for the sheriff's department when I was eighteen. The worst case of child abuse that I saw at that time was a little Indian girl, and they had taken cigarettes, and if they burned her here, they burned her here. They burned her, all the way down her body, so she was probably three years old, and she was sat up on the counter, she just sat still, because if she moved, they would burn her with cigarettes. And through my years of, and Liz can attest, it's horrific. And we've, and I've called and screamed and yelled on the state level, they have to do something for these kids because all you're getting when we don't do something is, I've seen now three generations, from when I went in when they were kids to now, they are now offenders. And that's what's happening because of the mental illness, the drug abuse, the sex trafficking. And the, I think, one of the biggest issues in getting foster care are people are afraid of the kids because there's so much traumatic things that they've done. Disruption is an understatement, they're scared to death of the kids, and they have to bring these poor children into their houses because of the vast things that these children have experienced from parents trying to kill their kids because they think they're flying, because they're so strung out on drugs. And, and there's never been an answer in the thirty years from, from going to the attorney general's office. Nobody ever has any answers, and, and I don't mean this in a bad way. Ends up putting, everybody puts freaking blinders on because it's so, such a huge issue that nothing can be done. And this is disgusting, that all this, and something has, somebody has to start somewhere, and someone has to do something because it's not fair. They don't, they didn't have, ask to be there, those poor kids, and it's out of sight, out of mind. And like I said, we've had two children die in it, and somewhere, somebody has to start and do something, so.
My question would be, especially now with all the different grants through the rescue plan and everything, is there any way we could get money to even identify a facility or anything? Is there anything out there for you to pull from so we can put something together?
So I'm not sure, like, the, like, the funding piece, I know, like, what I'm doing, I'm looking at empty state buildings. Like, any state buildings that have already been, right, that we already own or state sites, to take that. They are looking at transitional, like, Elko, at their meeting, talked a little bit about, like, there's funds out there, but there needs to be a plan first, because, right, the, the plan of exactly what needs to happen, or like, if you had a building, or if you had something, actually having the, the plan, then their, their viewpoint was is that there would be money pools to pull from, it, but it would take a lot of collaboration. Much like the Child Advocacy Center that you guys are already in collaboration with, with the other four counties, which is where all the forensic interviews of children occur, and Lander County does participate in that. And that's housed in Elko, and then also the Juvenile Detention Center is a countywide. And so I think really it's about, more about figuring out what kind of shelter to put in place, or does somebody have something that is already kind of established, and then how would that be funded once we knew what that was?
Well, I've, I've been to the one in Clark County, and I understand that, that I, I'm going, the first thing is where the funds are going to, are going to come from. So if we decide to do this with the other four counties, we can put it in any one of the counties. It still would be an emergency situation, but you've got full-time staff there.
Right.
And, and that's twenty-four-seven, and that, that takes a lot, so when we look at this, we go, I'm, I'm sure we all want to see something like that done, and like, you know, Commissioner Kathy pointed out, foster homes are sometimes hard to get because of the situations that they're in and the safety concerned. You know, it's one thing to take, to take a small child, it's another one to take a sixteen-year-old, a fifty-year-old that's rebelling. And so I, I think we're, we're for you, we all see the need, but I was concerned where the funds were going to come from, so, I mean, because if you've got that, I don't know what else, what else can we do as a commission? What do you want from us?
Well, I thi, I think it's more about having this information and knowing what's happening, and then just think about, because I, I don't know the solution. That's, that's really, I'm out looking for, like, empty buildings, talking to community leaders just to get ideas, other ideas to throw in, to, to see what that looks. I know there's an empty honor camp outside of Ely that that commission brought forward, that's already state-owned, so could that be remodeled? So looking at that. Elko is looking at some apartments that maybe were abandoned, so we're having a meeting to talk about that. Really, it's, it's what might be available out there, and I don't know where the funds will come from until I know what the fund need is. So it depends on if it's, you have to buy property, we'd be looking at the ideas, is, is that property is going to have to be gotten an infrastructure and build something, that's going to be a different cost than revamping an abandoned building that is already owned by either a county or a state. So I guess that's where I can't answer specifically where the funds will come from, because it's going to depend on what ideas come to the table.
And I don't think you can do it, like, have one in Humboldt County, I think every county has to have their own so these kids can stay in their own communities, and yes, is it a huge burden to a county? And if you have funds, you absolutely get it in your own community, and you figure out how to fund it. And if the county has to fund part of it, yes, because these are our kids. And we fund other things that, you know, if we fund baseball fields and we fund all these other things, that we should invest in helping save this, these kids. I just think that if we ask to go in different counties, then you're ripping them out of their homes and sending them to other counties. And it, all that does is complicate it and make it that much worse. And I think that if we look within our own counties, you know, something we have here, and invest in these kids, doesn't have to bother for be a huge facility, but something that we, and if you have to have staff, you have to have staff. But if you don't, all you're doing is putting blinders on and saying, we can't do anything. And it just, the pinwheel, pinwheel thing does nothing, other than people drive by and go, oh, those are pretty, they have no clue what the hell that means. And it just makes me sick of all the years of sitting over there trying to get something done. And until it comes, it has such a horrific front, it has to go to the district attorney's office, and they have to get involved and do emergency stuff, these kids are just, they have to do these home safety plans. For one, obviously, nobody really likes those, they have nowhere to put them, so they're trying to help these families. Where some of these kids, and they have, they should be removed, but they don't have any choice. So it has to get pretty broad for them to be able to take these kids out, and I just think that if, if we don't do something ourselves, we just, we're just putting blinders on and asking somebody else to fix our problem.
All right, is there any questions for Brandy from the audience? All right. Yes.
Just an idea, we're sitting here and beat it up if you want, but Colt Nelson, for the record, a new public facility may be built for the sheriff's office. What would it hurt to have some type of section in there for this need? And there is staff, Jayler, whatever, that could temporarily wa, I mean, it's just an idea that you could kind of couple those together and have a nice facility when we build it as part of that for youth displacement, whatever you want to call it, but it's part of our community, and we take care of our kids, at least it's a place where they could go, and they're safe, and we could figure out what, what to do from there, but, you know, you look at both of those ideas coming together, it might be something we could do that we're already spending money on. Just an idea.
I think we're talking two things, we are talking the emergency care, what do you do in the middle of the night or the afternoon or whatever with these children? And then, and if that took them out of the area for a short amount of time, I wouldn't mind that. I mean, one emergency building for the four counties, but then, we need to bring them back to the community with the, with the foster care if we're going to have them for a while. So that, so I think we're talking a couple of different things.
And I do think, I do have some FAQ sheets that, that Elko had asked us to, we had them put together. I've had them printed, you guys are only the second presentation I've been able to do that I actually had them ready for. So these do have a lot of information for anyone who might be interested, and also, we are completely online now with our application process. But we, even emergency shelter care through the foster, you know, they have all kinds of choices. And I do think there's, there's people out there that want to, I just don't think that there's people out there that know necessarily the state of the situation either. I think there's both. And there's people that's nervous to do that, but there is still people out there that have, have a heart and want to open it up for children who are displaced. I think your community probably has some of those people too. I think the knowledge, the knowledge is lacking.
I think you ought to advertise for that.
They do, they do, they have that.
Yeah, but, I mean, like, put it on our social page or something, that we need foster homes.
Because the Division Juvenile Office, every, they, they continuously put that out there on social media for training and classes and things like that.
Certainly don't hesitate to reach out to me if you have any other questions, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move into item seven, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the bid award to the twenty-twenty-three Crack Seal Project PWP-LA-2023-301, One Sierra Nevada Construction, Inc., in the amount not to exceed six hundred and ninety-four thousand and seven dollars. Base bid recommended for acceptance. Morning, Donnie.
Good morning, this is for Crack Seal. We plan on starting out there on Skyline, working our way in, I believe we're coming clear into nineteen or sixteen hundred. It should be in the back, if I was just reading that over this morning. So this is a part of our preventive maintenance project we're starting, so.
Is that the same outfit that did it the last time?
Yes, yes. There's only two people that really did this, and this time we've only had one bidder, so.
I know they did Hilltop last year, I think.
Yeah.
And it goes thump, 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 going down the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Because all the, where they sealed the cracks, it's a little higher than the rest of the road.
It usually sinks in, though.
I was going to say, it settles.
It'll settle in, yeah.
Yeah, probably when the summer hits.
Yeah, well, then we're going to come in later, probably in the fall, maybe, and do a cake sale over it, so. But this will sell up to crack, so.
Any questions?
This is the only one that bid on it?
Yeah, I find that odd, too.
Yeah, I guess, but, but my other concern is the tree that we could save, do we really need all of this information? This is thicker than, than a lot of them, and I'm assuming the contractor gave you a lot more, so I'm going, I, I really do want to save a tree, I mean, as long as it's open to us, there's, there's a lot that we need, but not everything.
Oh, sorry, you get hit for not having enough information.
That's a no win.
I appreciate, I appreciate your information.
I do, but I mean, you know, I've, when I started going through, I'm going, but that's up to me, it's up to the experts, we make the final decision after you bring us the information, so.
Well, thank you, are there any questions from the public? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the bid award to the twenty-twenty-three Crack Seal Project PWP-LA twenty-twenty-three three oh one, Sierra Nevada Construction Incorporated, in the amount not to exceed six hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, or ninety-four and seven dollars. Basic bid.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second? A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Donnie. Okay, so at this time, we'll recess the board of Lander County Commissioners and convene the meeting of the Lander County Liquor Board composed of the Lander County Board of Commissioners and Sheriff Ron Unger. A, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the transfer of Tonia Baker with Baker's Brew liquor license from on-off sale to mobile sale and other matters properly relating there to. And B, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the on-off sale liquor license for Casey and Chastity Hall with Hall Enterprises DBA, The Lucky Spur Saloon, and other matters properly related there to. Morning, Ron.
Good morning.
Ron Unger, for the record, on item A, that is pretty much a, a transfer. So they transferred from the Baker's Brew to a mobile, which they can do, we checked everything out, everything's okay on that one. And the other one, item D, is for Kingston Canyon, The Lucky Spur has changed ownerships, and everything is okay on that one, so.
Thank you, Ron.
Just a quick clarification, because when I said transfer, I'm thinking, are we transferring the license from the one to the mobile? Or is it an addendum?
They're transferring it, they do, we're doing away with the Baker's Brew. Okay, because that was on off.
And it would just strictly be mobile?
And it's going to the mobile.
Okay, I, I wanted to clarify that, okay, thank you.
Am I correct on that?
Okay, are there any other questions, questions from the public? Okay, Bill, should we take each, item A and B as a separate motion, or just one motion?
Yeah, we separate.
Okay.
I'll make a motion we approve the transfer of Tonia Baker and the Baker's Brew liquor license from the on-off sale to the mobile sale.
Is there a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now we'll take B.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the on-off sale liquor license for Casey and Chastity Hall with Hall Enterprises DBA, The Lucky Spur Salon, Saloon. You don't need a hair salon with a liquor license, right? The Lucky Spur Saloon and other matters properly related there to.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're adjourned the meeting of the Lander County Liquor Board and reconvene the Lander County Board of Commissioners, thanks, Ron. So number nine, Division of Water Resources, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the Nevada Division of Water Resources fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four groundwater basin budgets and adjustments for the following basins. A, Antelope Valley Groundwater Basin in the amount of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. B, Big Smokey Valley Northern Part Groundwater Basin in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. C, Boulder Flat Groundwater Basin in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. D, Buffalo Valley Groundwater Basin in the amount of three thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-three cents. E, Carrico Lake Valley Groundwater Basin in the amount of two hundred, or sorry, two thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-two cents. F, Clover's Area Groundwater Basin in the amount of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. G, Crescent Valley Groundwater Basin in the amount of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. Cove Bay Valley Groundwater Basin in the- Koby Valley Groundwater Basin in the amount of $219.56. I, Lower Reese River Valley Groundwater Basin in the amount of $14,584.13. J, Middle Reese River Valley Groundwater Basin in the amount of $26,105.20. K, Upper Reese River Valley Groundwater Basin in the amount of $7,866.53. L, Whirlwind Valley Groundwater Basin in the amount of $26,928.49. M, Humboldt River Groundwater Basin in the amount of $26,833.13. And lastly, N, Kingston Creek, Creek, Groundwater Basin in the amount of $3,593.75. Do we have any questions on this?
Have these increased, Lincoln? Quite a bit. They've increased some. I'll make a motion, we approve the Nevada Division of Water Resources fiscal year 2023 to 2024 groundwater basin budgets and adjustments for the following bases that were read in.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Okay, sorry.
We have another question.
Yeah, yeah, come on up front, sir. I should have asked.
Howard Higby, Lincoln County Commissioner.
Yeah.
We do this same thing you're doing right now with the State Engineers Office. We put a letter with this every year, because the statute says this money that is collected from these basins has to be spent in those basins.
Okay.
And so we put a letter with this every year for the last five years requesting that they show us the invoices where the money was spent in those bases. They failed to do it, but it's just a suggestion.
Okay. No, thank you for that.
They're probably not going to send you anything back. At least you're putting them on notice that, hey, you need to spend this money where you collected it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, and we already called for the vote, so.
Wouldn't you guys like to amend that motion?
Yeah, well.
I would.
Yeah, so let's, let's go back and, or discuss this further. So with the public testimony that we had, would we like to send a letter to the groundwater basin stipulating that they follow NRS and that that money is spent in those basins?
I think it's a great idea, and I don't need to amend the motion. Can I just make another motion?
Yes.
Because it's open, so on number nine, that we definitely follow Commissioner Varlin's idea and send a letter with our money, asking them to, I don't say demanding, but asking them to give us the information of where the money is spent in each individual basin.
Okay, we have a motion?
So what happens if, if they don't use all the money? Where's the money go?
They keep it.
Good point. We've been asking them for years.
I think that's what, the motion is what Pat's saying is accountability for the dollars. It's like, where is it spent? If it's not, where's, you know, where's it pooled at, so.
Lincoln Sullivan for the record, so we have to approve this before the new year so that Laura can get it on her tax roll. And then, once the new year starts, Juicy will submit the voucher to pay him. But we pay the full amount, so if, if they don't use it, I don't know where it goes, but it doesn't stay here. Because we pay the full amount that you guys approved today.
We can say that's separate, that's okay.
So do you guys want us to send the letter now or when we pay it next fiscal year?
No, I think we should probably send it now.
Okay.
Why don't we do one of each?
Well, absolutely, that's what I was thinking, yeah. Now, and.
And a copy of the letter when we send the money.
Yeah, maybe we can bird dog it a little bit to get some accountability there, so. All right, so we have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move into item 10, for discussion of possi, oh, actually, let's take a, take a ten minute break before we continue on.
Muted. Will now be recorded.
We're gonna jump to item 15, so we can get Mr. Higby out of here and back home.
Carson, I don't get to go old.
To Carson. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the resolution and MOU for the Silver State RS 2477 Historic Right-of-Way and fund an amount not to exceed $7,500 for the purposes to get sent to DC for approval.
Okay, Commissioner Higby, Lincoln County, Nevada. And also, I want to give a shout out. I want to thank you guys for rejoining our Nevada Association of Counties. That's huge, we're, we're a state that is a hundred percent state. It swings a lot more weight in DC when we go back there and lobby for things. Just in the last eight years that I've been a commissioner and been going back and working with National NACO, their lobbying unit that they've put together, the lobby for rural counties and rural states of the western states of Nevada is huge. Through Western, it's called Western Interstate Region. And then the other group is Rural Action Caucus. And, and they're, they're a huge advocate for rural counties. So anyway, but just a shout out and a thank you from our board. As your president, if you got any questions this year, I, I will be in the hot seat for a few more months, so. And you're welcome, always welcome to come to Elko this fall when we have our convention. Love to have you. It was just exciting to have you back in the fold, so.
Thank you.
All right, let me give you a little history on this RS 2477, Bill. In 1887, they, they passed the mining law. And it required that, that it, it made it to where if you were a mine or a county or whatever, you had the right of way to these roads. In other words, you had the right to build a road across public land, federal land, to get to whatever it is you're building, a, a farm, a mine, whatever it is you're doing. Well, when they passed FLIPMA in 1976, they left that in there. And it, but you had to prove. What it does, what it did was the counties or the miner, miner, whoever claimed that right of way had to go and file to get it. Well, between then and where we're at now, the RS 2477 rights of way, you have to go, the, the courts, I think, did this. Now you have to go and sue the federal government to get a right of way. And people, counties, and I used to think the same way. I thought, you know what, RS 2477, it belongs to us. Well, go try to get a permit or try to get something to put a, a cable line, a fiber line in your county road and see what happens. BLM will come after you like a bad dream, because they got, they give you what's an easement. The difference between an easement of your planter, could probably explain it better to me, but your easement is they own it and they give you the revocable permit to use it. Right of way, it belongs to you. Right of way, I have the right of way. It belongs, in this case, to counties. And so what this bill does is it hopefully stops what happened in Ny County with Carver a few years ago and the Jar Bridge mess that Elko ended up in. Rex said it cost them like $600,000 time they got through the court fees and everything to get the Jar Bridge road back. And people live in there. I mean, there's this road completely washed out, and they couldn't, wouldn't let them go fix it, even though there was people living in there. Anyway. Make it, a long story short, Colorado, about twenty years ago, they tried this bill, failed. So Wyoming picked it up about four years later, reworked it a little bit, and tried it again through Congress, failed. In 2017, Utah picked it up and Mike Lee and the attorney, he was a retired AG out of Utah. I'm getting old, Pat. Can't remember names. Anyway, they reworked it to where, instead of trying to make it contrary to FLIPMA, they run it right with FLIPMA. So everything that FLIPMA says, it adheres, you read the bill and you lay FLIPMA beside of it, and it runs perfect, side by side with FLIPMA. The only thing that changes is, instead of having to go sue the federal government to get your right of way, you can go take, you still have to take your information, your proof, your, your testimonies, your pictures, whatever you have proven that that road has been there before 1976. You still have to take that to a judge. And the judge can look at it and decide if it needs to go to court or not. If it doesn't need to go to court, if there's enough information there, he can grant you a quiet title. You can come back to your courthouse and file it and it's yours. And that's what this whole bill is all about. And, and what we're trying to do is push it through Congress. So what I've done the last two years is I've got Masto and Rosen on board to introduce it. So what we're trying to do is counties, if we can get each county to pass a resolution to send to Congress, it gives them some footing to stand on, because the liberal end of what you're dealing with in Washington is going to fight this tooth and nail. Somehow, they think that by granting this, I don't know about your county, but my county, I can't afford to pave the streets in my towns, let alone pave the street through a monument or out to something that, somebody's hunting camp somewhere. Not gonna happen. Because financially, we just can't. But what it does do is give us the ability to take that. So the last two or three years, they passed all this money for infrastructure. It'll give you the ability to take that infrastructure, that last mile connectivity, and go get those grants. And, and your utility companies, they can put their infrastructure in your road. And they don't have to go through the NEPA process, because it's already been disturbed. It's, I think there is some minimal NEPA process, but it's minimal. It's, it's done under a, they call it a Fonzie. No, yeah, no, it's no significant impact. Finding of no significant, yeah, no significant impact. And, and they can put their cable under, even your power lines, if you did underground power, there's, I mean, you've got communities or people that don't have power in your county. We do too. I mean, they're still running off diesel generators or solar or whatever. But it would give that connectivity, it would give you the ability to, to give your utilities that connectivity. And so that's what we've run this thing on. But our senators need something to stand on. So when they get attacked, they say, well, hey, I have ninety percent, you know, a hundred percent of our counties in Nevada, resolutions, they want this thing done. So they have some standing.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, listen. It was a long oration, I apologize.
Any commissioners have questions?
I think we very definitely should do the resolution. As far as the amount of money, that's totally up to you folks. Do you have some money enough we can take it out of your account?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
God luck at the budget.
Definitely benefits us. Is there any questions from the public?
We've been looking at this for so long, and I, I know he's been working on it. So this is, this is probably the best step we have to go forward with the least amount of money, actually.
Yep. All right. Do we have a motion?
Okay, I will make a motion that we, that we approve the resolution. Do we need a MOU too?
The MOU is, well, all the MOU is for Bob. He was gonna call in. Mr. Widener, are you on the phone? Guess not.
That was, that would be with him, is that what it was?
Yeah, the MOU is with him. What it, what it does, it gives him the permission to, to lobby, because that's what he.
To allow them to do that? Do you, okay, I missed that. Did you have a copy of the MOU in here?
There should have been one in that pack.
Okay, I saw the one with the resolution, but we'll handle the other, okay.
Yeah, you hold off on the MOU. And, and the money part of it is, it's not mandatory. I mean, if, if, whatever you can put in the pot, we'll take it and use it, we'll spend it.
Okay.
I didn't realize how expensive it was until I was with Bob back there and we took a bunch of people, actually staffers, from the different offices, the congressional offices, to dinner one night. It cost him over a thousand bucks for one meal to lobby these staffers. I'm like, oh, geez, Bob.
It's expensive to eat back there. Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve the resolution and MOU for the Silver State RS 2477 Historic Right-of-Way. And we fund the amount of $7,500.
So we have, the MOU is in our pack, and it does specify that if we were to terminate the contract early, then we would pay a rate of $250 per hour for the time that was spent, so.
All right, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 I have one question.
Is the 250 hour not to exceed the 7,500? Yes, let me look at this again.
Yeah, check that out.
Right. Because that's how we pay, so we don't know more.
We would hope.
Now, will he?
Is there an, I didn't look at that MOU close. Is there an expiration date on that MOU?
Yeah, so it should not exceed the total of 7,500. And until December 31st, 2023.
So there is a, there is a.
Yeah, so basically.
If we don't have that thing in place, if we don't have it done by then, probably not gonna happen. Because things are gonna, you'll have an election and things will, well, even when they get into the election season, if, if it's not out on the floor somewhere, it's probably not gonna happen.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner, maybe we could, maybe we could have them work with our current lobbyist we have. Maybe they could leverage.
Oh, absolutely.
Leverage Porter Group as well, because this is an additional lobbyist, it's what we're paying for.
Yeah, he's already working with John Porter.
Oh, good deal.
Yeah. Yeah, Porter's on board with this. But talk to John from your end too, so we know, because Bob's lobbyist sometimes won't work together.
No, we'll send him this, we'll send him the support from our commissioners, what we're asking, so they know that we're on board and look it up.
See, and I talked to John when we were back there a month ago. We went and he had a reception, and I visited with him about this, and he's on board. I'm excited. I hope we can get this done.
All right, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, appreciate you coming.
All right, so we'll move into item 10, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the current Lander County grant application packet and guidelines that are presented or make modifications. So this is back on here with, at the request of Commissioner Chop, to look at this and how we fund grants and stipulations. And so, what do we got, Lake?
Okay, Lake and Sullivan for the record, what's in your backup is what I give out to all of the agencies in the community that put in for grants or that want to.
Okay, so this, these are the guidelines that I was referring to, you know, budget hearings that we had set. Basically, and I keep saying that it falls back to us commissioners to make sure that we're upholding it. So Lake has said that each recipient or person that's asking for a grant gets a copy of this, so it's just.
So something Lake and I talked about on some of those grant application packets when they go to them, they do not always supply back everything that's requested. So maybe if that's part of the issue, one of it, we could put on the stipulations in the agreements that we have is that if they don't send back a completed packet, then basically they don't get a grant.
Yeah, just disqualify.
So that's up to you guys, yeah.
Well, and I believe, Mike, one of the things that you were wanting was a budget from them to see like how they used it, which some of them provide that, but some of them don't. But it is in the questionnaire on number three that they are supposed to give us an operation budget to show us what they're spending the money on. So nine points out of 10, we just get the questionnaire back with the answers, but no backup.
What did you do during your season or this to assist yourself with financial? Because like I said, there's concessions and fundraisers and everything else. And just a question there to say, what are you doing to help yourself become less reliant on the county? I, I like the Liza's statement that it's, if it don't come back to you complete, it shouldn't be, it, it shouldn't be up to you guys to have to make that decision. Sorry, you're incomplete.
My question is, because we do have a few that just turn in the answers, the two-page answers, and they don't give us anything else. So do I not even put it in front of you at the workshop, or do I let you make that decision?
If they don't, no, that's what we're talking about today. If they don't follow the guidelines that are laid down, it should be, it should be automatic disqualification.
Okay.
I mean, these are, these are the requests. We spoke, this is what we're saying that we need and want. And if they don't have the fall through to provide that, then they shouldn't be considered for the grant. That's my, that's my opinion.
Do you want us to add that question?
If, if everybody's fine with what, what I'm requesting, I'm fine with it. If we don't think as a group, it, it's not, it's just, I, I think there's opportunity that, you know, some groups don't take advantage of.
It's a valid question. And sometimes we catch them off guard, so I think it's great to have it in the application.
And number five of our guidelines, it says, if an agency applies for grants continuously year after year, each request needs to be substantially lower from the previous year until no longer needed. So it's a great thing. It's like, what are you doing to make that happen, you know?
So my other question on the guidelines, is there anything on those that you want to change or are you happy with how they are? I know there's been a lot of questions to me about number four, which is the prizes, which obviously, we don't want to do any kind of cash prizes, but I know like the rodeo grants they've asked, like, can we use? we don't want to do any kind of cash prizes, but I know like the rodeo uh grants, they've asked, like, can we use, can we purchase belt buckles? And we've told them no, but I don't know if there's some leeway you guys want to put on that, or if you just want to leave it at no prizes at all. That's the only one I can think of that we have had questions and kind of concerns on on.
I just, I think it sends a, I mean, I think it just, it's, I mean, we're spending taxpayers' dollars, and we're using their dollars to buy gifts and awards to give to people. I just, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like, doesn't seem clean to me. Uh, that's my personal opinion.
So keep it focused more on operations, like insurance, things like that, and then entry fees and stuff, they can use that money to do the prizes.
This is to help them house that event, right? And then the other thing is, we have that total amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars. I I don't think we've ever stuck to that, but, I mean, we have, there's a problem with that, especially when we're funding like these big grants, you know, like Kingston, which things that are needed. So I don't know.
I believe we took that out of projects.
Did we? We took that out of projects, okay. Um, all right. And are you guys good with the hundred thousand dollar amount still? Is that something that we feel that we can hit, if, you know, for next year's budget?
And I know one year, um, last year during budget workshop, it was asked if it was a hundred thousand per fund, because we do give grants out of three different funds, Austen Town, Battle Mountain, and the general fund. So do you want a hundred thousand per fund or a hundred thousand total between all three funds? So that would be another question.
Okay.
Well, I, it gives us something to go by, and yes, very often, we decide to go over that, but that's our decision at the time. So at least we have it online, and we can try for the the hundred. I mean, we do try.
Well, I like your goal.
But for the total amount with all three, or each one a hundred?
Yes, I was like his question.
What was it before? Was it all, you remember?
It was combined a hundred thousand for all. And and a little history on past legal had recommended not to buy the, not allow buying the prizes, because it's not a substantial benefit to the community as a whole. Um, and that's, that was one of the reasons why the prizes were, but it's entirely up to you guys.
Which I think that that goes to make sense. I mean, hosting the event, it does become a benefit. I mean, people get to come and see it, watch it, uh participate in it. We get people that are in our town that are staying in motels, buying fuel, buying food. But that's why I say that the, using the money to buy awards, I just, I don't know if that's just for some.
Last year, you guys had exempted um the conservation district's grant for sage grouse from the hundred thousand, because there, that is a hundred thousand alone they ask for, just for sage grouse, so. Are you exempting some people from the hundred thousand, or we do, or we not? Because I don't know.
See, that, that's my one question, is that, is these, just like that, I mean, how do we maintain that hundred thousand?
Yeah.
So, there's a balance.
Could we categorize that to where you, when you're getting them, Lake, and to say, this is this grant, and, I mean, it puts more on you. I I totally agree with Commissioner Sparks on on the fact that prizes, it should be promotion and and what they need to do to get the event going, but you know, to ask for ten thousand dollars to, or five thousand, or one dollar to buy the trophies is, uh, crazy.
What did we end up, what, um, this year, when the numbers were done, giving out total?
Um, I I don't know off the top of my head. I could go get that information if.
I was just curious, no?
Um, I know that we didn't stick to the hundred thousand.
As a whole?
No.
Sitting here.
I don't think any fund went over a hundred though.
Sitting here adding them up on the paper for the first time, I can't, I, because I asked Brian, tried to educate myself, I was at three eighty-five. With, and that wasn't none, that wasn't the big ones, that was just what
Yeah.
we gave out in in asks. Minus our latest request. I could be wrong, but.
With my time here, we've never hit the hundred thousand, we always went over it.
Yeah, we've never stuck to the hundred.
Well, that's, that's, one of the hardest words to say is no. So I'm just saying, we have to.
Yeah.
We, I mean, that, I'm just saying, if we set our guidelines, we have to do try, you know, do, be responsible in trying to maintain that that guideline, you know, those rules that we set out. Because if we do, it's just kind of a waste of time that, that we're even discussing this, so.
I don't think personally a hundred thousand is feasible for all three. I think you're gonna have to set an amount for each fund, because there's no way, I I just don't, we get a lot for the general fund.
I can agree, uh, just for like the organizations that aren't, uh, just like for the Family Resource Center. I mean, those are things that do our whole county, so when we do bigger projects and things like that, some of that stuff isn't feasible. And then you end up having higher amounts that you you do for that, so there are organizations that aren't just like the rodeos and things like that. Um, so I don't know if a hundred thousand across the board is going to work for that. I agree with putting a cap, absolutely, I agree, but I don't think for one, for a hundred thousand for all three is going to work.
We could do a lower amount for Battle Mountain and Austin, if you want to do fifty each on those, or.
So what we have, we have Battle Mountain, Austin, and.
Lander County, per out of the general fund.
Do you have the data that you could pull quickly and easily to say, this is what we spent the last three or five years? This is kind of where it went to, and bulk it and say, this is Austin, Battle Mountain? And then we would have a better number if we're gonna set a a number
Yeah, absolutely.
to pull it, but not a lot of added work to your already work routine.
I will say Austen Town, it's it's a lot harder to sustain those grants, especially the Chamber Grant. We used to fund the Chamber Grants out of the general fund, and we moved them, per your guys' request a couple of years ago, to the town funds. And it has been hard for Austen Town Fund to sustain that. This year, it took a little finagling for me to get the numbers to work, because the fund balance just isn't there.
Yeah, so, and that's the other thing to understand, these are gonna, it's going to be, so we set this amount, but with, in our own guidelines, we're telling them to self-sustain, to curb, so it's each year, those amounts should be coming down less and less and less, right? So it's like, it's gonna be a changing, it should be, if we're sticking to our guns and just saying, okay, what have you done to self-sustain? We gave you this much last year, it's not going to be that same amount this year, but it's gonna take us to say that, you know? And it's just, and the whole stuff encourages them to to uh think outside of the box, you know?
And Commission, it's something that you guys might consider too, is like a Gopi, and some of these that are, that are like the services that Kathy's referring to, they aren't necessarily the organizations that are trying to start up like the barrel racing, or the rodeos, or the racetracks. Um, so I'm not sure if we wanted to delineate the two.
Well, there, I think there needs to be some delineation, that's what I was saying, you know, like.
Yeah, but in the application process itself is what I'm saying, is if we, if you guys would like to delineate the the nonprofits that are just putting on events in the community, and then the the things that are actually kind of community-based.
Providing community-based services.
Correct.
Yes, I think those need to be.
And and then we could set the, kind of the totals of what you guys would like to give to each of them. Um, and then we can maybe work within them, because right now, they're all bundled into one.
I like that.
I think that's a good idea, and then if we can have some numbers on that, what it costs, if we can do that, and then then we have a little bit of a better basis to go off of.
Yep. Everybody good with that?
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, we'll move into eleven, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the affiliation agreement between Lander County and the Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education on behalf of Great Basin College.
So we had a lot of questions for this agency. It's been really tough to get them to respond back to us. Um, we finally got a response back from the gal that actually reached out with this affiliation agreement. Um, she said she was new and she didn't have much information. As far as I can, and maybe Brandon, Brandy can talk to this, we have never had an affiliation with this agency before. The state may have, but the county has not. Bill had a lot of questions on it, but she said no one would be here to be able to ask, answer our questions. Um, she was trying to get ahold of her dean, and we still have not heard back from them. So I think we just table it and.
Brandy?
I didn't realize that that's what this is, so Brandy can go for the record. Um, this, if this is for my clinic, I have the student nurses from Great Basin College come every year, and they help us with the flu pod. So they gave out the immunizations. They just need an agreement between the two. I don't know what the agreement says, because like she said before.
It's got a lot of information in there, and Bill had a lot of questions on it. We had a lot of questions, and the response going back and forth has not been very easy. We actually have a an agreement that we needed updated and changed, because they had incorrect dates, and we have failed to get that, so.
So that's probably all this is. I will say, they're super helpful to have. That's probably the majority of the people that show up to assist me with the flu pod are these student nurses, so hopefully, when they send it back, we can make a good agreement.
My recommendation at this point would be to table it right now, until maybe I can get with Brandy and start to figure out where we're going with this thing. But at the moment, I'm wondering, maybe you can explain this, how come this is, these are nurses, right?
Student nurses.
Yeah, but what does it have to do directly with the county? I would have thought that would be the hospital, and the hospital has its own governing board.
Um, the hospital, so it's more, everybody comes together to do the flu pod, so it's more LPSI. So it's search and rescue, the hospital, community health, um, people from the mines come and help, all different groups come and assist. So to administer the immunizations, I have to have a nurse, the student nurses are able to do it, and it counts towards their clinicals, so that's why we utilize them. But for me to say, hey, my flu pod's in October, and I need maybe twelve nurses to come help me give shots, getting twelve nurses to actually commit and say, I can be there, is almost impossible. Getting student nurses, because it's part of their clinicals, is super easy, like their teacher says, yep, we're gonna be there, and then they're all there, so that's.
So one other question we had was, is we've never had this agreement before, so how come we now have it when you've utilized them in the past?
I'm not sure. This year, the lady just asked, she said they needed an updated agreement. It was a different instructor prior to the gal this year and last, well, she came last year too. And she had never asked for an affiliation agreement or not, and I don't know if it was between the state and the school, I'm not sure.
So this is my concern, Bill, is that if if we're gonna look at this, it's like, again, it's like, I'm not necessarily in favor of bigger government or signing any of our county rights over to state agencies, so that would be my concern, it's like, what are the strings attached? What are we giving away, selling, anything by, I mean, it's like, like Liz said, we haven't had it that she knows of. Up until this point, why do we need it? So it's like, I would be a little bit suspect of, like, what are we signing away of our powers here in Lander County?
I don't know, Commissioner, from what I read, that we're signing away much. I think is what I see is that we're actually assuming a lot of responsibility for anything that may happen, and and we're taking on liability, so that's why I think that it'd be great to have somebody from them show up and speak to us on this, because.
But when you look through, when you look through this affiliation contract, I mean, it just refers to the the facilities and the institution, and we're neither one, so it really doesn't apply to us.
That's why I go back to where we've never had it before.
If they need something else, they need to make it clearer, and it wouldn't be this.
Yeah, absolutely.
The definitions make it sound like we're the institution, but that was part of my question, why the hospital? Because the hospital seems to me would be the appropriate institution, but I don't wanna.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's a, that's a long stretch.
That was one of the things that I was concerned with.
Okay, uh, we'll leave it alone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you, Brandy.
Um, so we'll move into item twelve, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash oh three for the already approved state of emergency for wild horse and burrows. We've already created the state of emergency, and we thought it would be a good idea to also have, and I think it was our counselor that said, suggested that we actually put a resolution behind it, so I think that's what we have here in front of us. Anybody like to read that resolution into the record?
I'm sorry, what did you say? You said that we should do what with the resolution?
Um, read it into the record.
No, no, before.
I said that it was our counselor's idea that we use it to back our state of emergency.
Oh.
When we did, when we declared the state of emergency, Bill had suggested that a resolution to back it would be probably a good.
And that's what we voted to do.
Yes, exactly. That's the good, yep.
This is the proposed resolution. Um, I don't mind if anybody wants to amend it, but that's what I. Genie helped a lot.
Want me to read it?
Sure, Mike, if you wouldn't mind, that would be great.
So, this, a resolution of the Lander County Board of Commissioners to declare a state of emergency for wild horse and burrow management. It's number twenty twenty-three dash oh three. Whereas appropriate management levels, AMLs for wild horses and burrows were established decades ago, based on science, guided by experience of government employees in the field, ranchers, cowboys, hunters, other outdoorsmen, and even a few environmentalists. And whereas those AMLs were established to provide a well-balanced environment for the benefit of the wild horses and burrows themselves, as well as the native wildlife, such as antelope deer, and occasional moose, elk, wolves, coyotes, jackrabbits, owls, hawks, eagles, and other birds, many kinds of fish, and native plants and trees, as well as to prevent soil erosion, prevent destruction of unnatural, or destructive or unnatural fires, and also to provide some feed for the domestic animals such as horses and cows. And whereas those AMLs were established to preserve balanced environment for nature lovers, hunters, ranchers, cowboys, mining enthusiasts, rock collectors, hikers, bird watchers, tourists, and other people who enjoy utilizing the public lands. And whereas, much wise thought and consequential adjustments went into making sure that AMLs were appropriate to maintain a balance of wildlife, domesticated animals, and all of the many interests involved in preserving the multiple-use concepts of the public lands. And whereas, despite all of the planning and their duties under the Federal Land Policy Management Act, the FLPMA, and other applicable laws, federal agencies have failed to keep wild horse and burrow populations within reasonable proximity to the AML targets. And whereas wild horses and burrow populations have now gotten so far out of control as to be causing starvation for the horses and burrows themselves, including readily visible ribs and on mini horses, as well as similar starvation of other animal, other wildlife populations, such as deer, antelope, bighorn sheep, et cetera. And whereas wild horses and burrows are causing unprecedented destruction to riparian areas, grasslands, and other environmentally sensitive areas. And whereas these problems are not only affecting Lander County, but all of Nevada and many other western states as well. And whereas our state officials, as well as ourselves and our constituents, all are concerned about the destruction. This uncontrolled growth of the wild horses and burrows is causing throughout Nevada and in many of our neighboring western states. Whereas, these out-of-control populations of wild horses and burrows have now grown to the point that in some cases, they exceed five times the acceptable AMLs set by federal departments, which have been attempting to regulate these populations, as well as the public lands themselves. And whereas soil and other erosion caused by the starving horses and wildlife has already resulted in declines in wildlife populations and destruction of important wildlife habitat. And whereas, the inevitable, inevitable long-term damage to the ecology of the region and its economic well-being posed by the failure to control wild horse and burrow populations and to keep them within the range of the established AMLs is already having deleterious effects throughout our region. And whereas, these devastating impacts will have decades-long effects that cannot be quickly cured. And whereas the new governor, our own state legislatures, legislators, and other Nevada counties have likewise expressed their concern over the burg.
The burgeoning.
Burgur, what?
Burgeoning.
Burgeoning populations of horses and burrows, which are causing widespread destruction to habitats and economies throughout the state. Now, therefore, it be resolved that a state of emergency currently exists in Lander County due to the failure of the various federal agencies to control wild horse and burrow populations to something approaching official AMLs. And be it further resolved that Lander County urges appropriate action by all of the state, federal, and local public agencies to quickly reduce the populations of wild horse and burrows currently trying to graze on often denuded pastures, grasslands, meadows, and other areas. And be it further resolved that this resolution be widely circulated, so it, as to inspire others to take appropriate action to get these destructive populations of wild horses and burrows under control quickly, so as to limit damage they are continuing to cause around the clock, and to prevent truly devastating and irreversible damage to our wildlife and economic environments.
Thank you, Mike.
So.
Yeah, what's that? Go ahead, yeah, read the past and as part of that resolution.
Oh, passed and adopted on this
Twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh of April twenty twenty-three.
We have a motion and a second.
May I, um, may I also add on this, um, I think probably it's a good idea for us to send a copy of this resolution to every county. There are commissioners in every county. Can we do that?
I will send it to the county manager.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be good. Okay. We have a motion and a second, and some direction. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. We'll move into 13, for discussion of possible action to approve this approved resolution under 2023, or 2023-04 for the already approved state of emergency for flooding.
This is the same as the other one you asked for it. Fortunately, this one's my sure.
Okay, I'll take this one. I'm naming a motion that we approve the resolution. A resolution of the Landmark County Board of Commissioners to declare a state of emergency for flooding. Number 2023-04. Whereas this past winter has deposited more snowpack in the mountains of northern Nevada than normal. And whereas the temperatures in northern Nevada have warmed up more quickly than normal. And whereas the combination of heavy snowpack and warming temperatures has resulted in rapidly rising rivers, which are already cresting above flood levels in many areas. And whereas in the past, such flooding has resulted in widespread damage to the public and private property and threats to public safety. And whereas the need for flood control and flood relief will not await the schedules of public bodies and public officials, but are often required immediately. And whereas this board anticipated these potential problems and possibilities back on April 13th, and consequently decided to declare a flood emergency on that date. Now therefore be it resolved that the said state of flood emergency is hereby currently in effect and will remain so until further notice or action by this board. Passed and adopted this 27th day of April, 2023.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we'll move into 14, for discussion of possible action to approve this approved, the three modified, or the modified three-year term contract renewal between Landmark County and Quest in a yearly amount not to exceed $36,857.
Like in Sullivan for the record, Laura couldn't be here today, so me, Liz, and Robert are gonna wing it for you guys. It's a lower amount than normal because Oasis has taken on some different things that Quest used to do for us. Robert would have more information on that if you guys have questions.
And how's Quest doing for us overall?
Um, I think okay.
I, I am gonna ask for clarification on this, because we were saying we're approving the modified three-year term contract renewal, but everything through it says an addendum. So when we do the motion, we do the motion for an addendum also?
I think that's how they've done it in the past as well. They always just do an addendum to the original contract. Um, so I don't know what.
Yeah, because we really aren't modifying the contract. We're, we're addendum-ing it.
Robert, quick, for the, for the record, I had that same question, Commissioner Yates, and that's how they, how they extend their contracts and renew them is by addendum, from the very first original contract.
Okay. Is there saying, is there anything, if you're saying that basically this addendum is full in force and everything prior is, is no longer, or how does that work?
Well, it says at the beginning, it's an addendum to the service agreement dated January 17th, 2017.
Oh, supersede all previous lists of services, okay.
Yeah, and when I talked to Laura about it, she said this was pretty much just the renewal, and it just kinda starts all over again.
And have they been doing a good job for us? Quest, for you guys?
For the sheriff's office, I do most of our own programming. In fact, I've done some for the county as well.
Okay.
Um, they're kinda slow at responding to requests. Um, I know that Laura has had some issues with them trying to do some things with the firewall and stuff, but I think that's where Oasis is gonna be taking over and doing a lot of that, and therefore that's being removed from this contract. So this really applies to, and we have a separate agreement for the sheriff's office, because it covers more 24/7 type of support. But it's essentially the same, same type of coverage.
Okay.
And it's, it's more for the software-based programming. If our voicemail stops working, they will remote in and work on it, and that type of thing. And then for some of the hardware replacement, that's extremely costly.
Okay, well, I think it's important, I mean, yes, we have to approve the contracts, but it's you guys that deal with these agencies and, and businesses on a day-to-day basis. So it's important that, you know, to know if they're doing a good job for you or not, so.
Okay, I will make a motion. That we approve the modified three-year term contract renewal between Landmark County and Quest in a yearly amount not to exceed $36,857, and this is to add the addendum number two to contract number four, seven, two, zero.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into 16. We will recess the Board of the Landmark County Commissioners and convene a meeting of the Landmark County Health Board composed of the Landmark County Board of Commissioners, Sheriff Ron Under, and Dr. Troy Ross. One, update on progress. Actually, we're just going to, Mr. Ross can read this. Come on, Ron, there's one more seat up here for you.
Right, so we will convene the Landmark County Board of Health and bring two items to the agenda. The item one is informational, and this is an update on the progress of the substance abuse presentation that's to be provided to our schools and the community. For the background on this, the, the growth of this need for this presentation comes from what has occurred in, in our communities with the unfortunate deaths of some young people due to drug overdoses. It's led to us developing a public service video, which is, has been published and is available for the community to view. And we decided that it would be important to build off of that and provides a more comprehensive presentation to help the people of the community, as well as our young people in the schools, to have a better recognition of the scope of this problem. And then the bigger goal with this would be to use this starting point to make sure that we have services available to the young people of our community for prevention and early intervention. So with that in mind, we've developed a program that's going to involve having a speaker come, present to the schools, the, the high school, middle school populations, on May 22nd during school day. That same speaker is going to be available to us for an evening presentation at the Civic Center that will be at 6:00 PM. And in addition to our, this person who will be presenting, an, an overview of the problems, as well as the impacts that, that these substance use issues have upon individuals and family, I'd like to convene a, a group, a panelist for a question and answer session available to the community. And so we have this scheduled for the 22nd. We have the speaker on board. He will be coming in from out of town. And then the, the last things that we need to finalize, who will be on our panel? And then we need to get out some, some information for some marketing piece to make sure that the, the community is aware of this. So that's what I wanted to catch the, the board up on, and the, the community as well that's listening in today for this meeting. And are there any comments or questions?
Have, have any of you guys had any response from the community on the video that went out?
I've had good response from people.
I, as well. I, I asked Bert if, if there was gonna be a follow-up, because I see some communities have got follow-up videos coming, so we'll have the, the nick in that. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think it's, I think it's only the start, because I don't, I don't see it ending, so. No, it was good. I liked it.
Good. Any other comments? Other comments?
All right, then, moving on to item two, and this will be an item for action. This is going to be a request to the Board of Health to put forward, uh, request to the county commission to create an authorization to hire a full-time clinician to staff our community health clinic. The background information to consider. So Landmark County is empowered by statute to offer direct clinical services. An excerpt from NRS 439.360 states that the county board of health powers requirements for order, for isolation, quarantine, or treatment. Under that chapter, the county board of health may treat any person or a group of persons with a communicable disease that is in an infection, that is in an infectious state, and poses a risk to the public health or who has been exposed to such a communicable disease. They may also monitor and treat any person or a group of persons with a communicable disease that poses a risk to the public health if there is a risk that the communicable disease will develop into a progressed state that endangers the health of the person or persons, or is in an infectious state. That's from Nevada VRI's statute. In addition to what's outlined in NRS, Landmark County has been providing clinical services to support the needs of the community. Such services have included medical care to inmates in the county retention facility, women's health services, school and sports physicals, and acute medical care. As our communities grow, Landmark County Health should be prepared to expand its capabilities to achieve the 10 essential public health services as delineated by the CDC. And in brief, these 10 essential public health services are, one, to assess and monitor population health status, factors that influence health and community needs and assets. Two, investigate, diagnose, and address health problems and hazards affecting the population. Three, communicate effectively to inform and educate people about health, factors that influence it, and how to improve it. Four, strengthen, support, and mobilize communities in partnerships to improve health. Five, create, champion, and implement policies, plans, and laws that impact health. Six, utilize legal and regulatory actions designed to improve and protect the public's health. Seven, ensure an effective system that enables equitable access to the individual services and care needed to be healthy. Eight, build and support a diverse and skilled public health workforce. Nine, improve and innovate public health functions through ongoing evaluation, research, and continuous quality improvement. And 10, build and maintain a strong organizational infrastructure for public health. Looking at those essential services, within these services are functions that require a licensed clinician. Historically, Landmark County has provided these clinical services by contract physicians. Our current physician is retiring, and we have the opportunity to reconsider how to fill that position in such a way as to be able to sustain current services and expand in the future. The best way to accomplish the, those goals is to authorize a position that is a county employee in order to ensure longevity and to have the flexibility to adjust the scope of work without having to renegotiate contract terms. Although we have utilized physicians for this role, utilizing a nurse practitioner would provide an equal level of care at a considerable cost savings. As presented in a previous Board of Health meeting, the median salary for a nurse practitioner is approximately $125,000. So with that background information in mind, what I'd like to suggest to the board is that it is an opportunity for us at the county level to take direct control of many of the services that in the past have been provided by the state. By NRS, rural Nevada is not completely empowered to provide all of those 10 essential services. Those are reserved for health districts. There have been two health districts, northern and, and southern Nevada historically. We now have, and Quad Counties is semi-autonomous in the Carson area. We now have a, a new health district, Central Nevada Health District, that's centered in Churchill County. Uh, so the impetus for, for change, for growth and, and more autonomy is already there. And we have this opportunity now to ride that, that wave and, and take on some of our autonomy ourselves. It's been about a little over five years since Landmark County took the functions of the community health nurse from the state and have now implemented that at, at the local level. That worked well. And now we also have offered these clinical services for several years with the contract physician. It, it's well-established, and I think that this is the chance for us to make sure that we keep a hold of those clinical services that we've already taken on, and also have the capacity to expand as, as we have staffing and, and the needs presented by the community.
Dr. Ross, would you clarify something for me? Um, the new health districts that they're putting in, you said that ours is based out of Fallon, out of Churchill, actually, which is the central district, right?
Well, that's the newest health district. It includes the four counties of Churchill, uh, Pershing, Yurica, and Mineral. I don't know how Mineral got in on that, but, so, so they now are their own health district, and that changes their ability to provide public health services.
Right, so my question is, because they are doing this, and that's just the beginning. Would ours, would our health district, if we do this, assert that?
Well, no, we wouldn't be able to declare a health district. We, we could, in the future, collaborate with adjacent counties if we would want to, to try to grow into that wall.
Okay, but would we fall under them?
Oh, no, no.
I mean, with another district coming up.
We're still directly under the state. So th- this health district is only those four counties.
Right, but that's just the beginning, and then they're gonna be doing more.
Well, we could petition to join that health district in the future if we see benefit from that.
Okay, yeah, I.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
That's right, that's not my clarification. My clarification is, they're, they're gonna start doing all these districts all around. By, by us having our own health area here, our health board and such. Would we fall under one of those when they automatically include our county, or would they leave us out?
No, the, each of those counties in the Central Nevada District, they worked collaboratively to create it. So it wasn't a state mandate. They, they chose to, to come together and create their own health district.
Okay, because I thought we actually had kind of a state mandate, the way they were putting all the.
No. No.
No? The districts together, and that was my concern.
Those four counties collaborated to start that district.
Okay, that was my concern, I thought. They were coming down on us, thank you.
No, no, not at all.
Okay.
So, uh, with using a physician assistant, do, there doesn't have to be seen overseeing, that, that person would be overseen by you?
No, a nurse practitioner is completely independent in practice. So there wouldn't be any physician oversight, which is different from a PA, a physician assistant, that does require physician oversight. So that's the benefit of a nurse practitioner. This individual would be completely independent.
Okay.
So Brandy could be our nurse practitioner?
When she gets finished with her training and becomes certified, she's. When she gets finished with her training and becomes certified, she certainly could grow into that.
How far away from that are we?
It's about two, two years, right? Four years?
Twenty, twenty-six.
Oh, okay.
So then that's setting aside, then we would no longer reenter contracts with the doctor, or we'd be going this way?
Correct.
Okay.
Currently, we have i- in the budget, a, a line item for a contract physician. I would hope that the, the county would just move that over into that, that clinical employee of the county. And in addition, they're currently on the budget as a line item for a public health nurse that has never been utilized. So the, the budget is already there between those two line items. That's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars annually.
Dr. Ross, I believe we did have some public comment rec- or letters that were sent in, so.
Correct.
I think at some point before we call for action on it, that we probably should rebuild it.
Yes, I will do that. Is there any other discussion amongst the board members, questions?
I, I believe in the, my understanding and researching as much as I can. My understanding up to the, to Brandy's position is always there. It's been there whenever. I see an expansion of it in, in the COVID. I see this, I, I, I still can't break away from not seeing this as just another expansion of, of government. We're gonna bring on another, the hundred and twenty-five thousand, I don't think is a true cost, because now we're gonna have billable services, correct? Cause we're gonna start billing. So you're gonna have to show, we're gonna have profit and loss margins, correct? I mean, we're, we're opening a business in competition. I mean, my belief is always, it's been, competition should be in the private sector, and, I mean, we have to, I, I wanna provide through, through like Brandy, but after that, we have great medical care elsewhere. I just, I don't see the continuing need to add a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Then we have liability and medical malpractice and everything else. Think we're expanding. I like, the first part of the presentation today, I fully support, fully support. I think the education of the community, everything you read i- in, in your ten. I'll go with six, four, I, four of them. I don't, I, I just, myself, I can't support. In, in, in some of the talk that I have with different people, that's, that's the question, and I'm still not understanding why the need for a nurse practitioner. When we do have a, a hospital, regardless of what our beliefs and our feelings are, we have Reno, we have Salt Lake City, we have Twin. What is the purpose of another hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to support a, a PA when we have the state? And we have coverage in, in Austin? I just, I'm questioning the benefit of, where the benefit is, is it, is bringing on this nurse practitioner?
We bill already. We currently bill, they currently bill insurances already. It's not like that's something new as far as a new liability.
So we've always done that?
Yeah, they're, yeah.
Correct. And, and we are only able to bill under a licensed practitioner. So if we were to decide not to have that licensed practitioner in the clinic, those billable services will go away. We haven't, we haven't ever billed it, but...
How, how did we bill before then? Cause we're, I, I'm not, so I, I'm getting lost here. We're saying that we've had these billable services forever, but until we brought on Dr. Wilcourt.
When they brought on Dr. Wilcourt, they had to get...
Okay, what was before that?
They were being billed, they were doing billing under Medicaid, okay, before? And so the office staff had to learn how to bill commercial insurance and things like that under that. When Dr. Wilcourt, you can tell me if I'm wrong, when Dr. Wilcourt got in there, they had to get set up with the commercial insurances in order to bill when people went in there, which they've done, correct?
What about all the years prior to Dr. Wilcourt?
Medicaid.
Dr. Peters was that contracted physician, and there were still billable services.
So what's the cost of this contract, i- if we go back, if we stay with the, if we do it like we did it, up until now? I, I'm not seeing the, the tie between what we have to do this now to what we've done that worked fine for the, the thirteen to the sixteen years I've been here.
Can I get some information on that? Brandy, for the record, Brandy been going. So prior to Lander County taking over community health, it was ran by the state. So each county had their own community health nurse, and then they had a contracted physician who oversaw each nurse and would come and see patients. So that's how they did it before. Once we take it over, now that we have it as Lander County, I'm only in our end. So I have to have physician oversight or nurse practitioner oversight for me to provide any services. The state was doing that for all of their entities, but now we're our own entity. So that's why we have to have that.
And we went to taking it back over because of the fifteen, or seventeen counties, only fifteen had nurses because then nobody wants to go to work for the state. So we went, I don't know how many months or up to a year, they could not hire health nurses. And so we went here forever without having anyone. And so in order to have our people saw that needed, they were low in income, and I was the one that fought for that. Is to get, to take it back ourselves because it, the state, they couldn't hire, they couldn't hire nurses.
And honestly, me over there alone, I can't. I have to have a physician oversight. So when I took this position, Dr. Peters was my physician, and then he passed away, and then Dr. Wilcourt was the physician. So now we're stepping into that where we need another person above.
And then how much should we pay under contract for Wilcourt?
One twenty.
This is one twenty.
One twenty, what's, what's my number?
One twenty, so.
And this includes all the malpractice and everything else?
The salary.
That's, so he has, so they carry, saw the one twenty-five, they carry everything that sells?
Oh, I'm sorry, for, for Dr. Wilcourt, yes.
Is this a tru- the one twenty-five is the flat-out true number that, that we're gonna approve?
The one twenty-five is this, just a salary base?
Salary.
Base.
Correct.
So what's the, then are we carrying the, the malpractice?
No, he is carrying his own malpractice, but that's where the question comes in for this, this board, if we want to hire somebody or if we want to continue contracting. And I think the, the concern was with continued contracting is finding providers.
I, I think it would be very difficult to find a, a nurse practitioner. There's a shortage in the, in the area for a contract position. There are agencies that will staff those contract positions at a much higher cost. Essentially double the cost, I, from what I understand. But to the services that would be lost by not having a licensed clinician. Right up front, you have the inmate services, the medical services to the inmates. Last year, we had, we saw twenty-six patients. If, if we, in community health, in Lander County Health, are not providing that, then the detention facility would be having to transport their, their inmates to the hospital and accrue those direct costs. Right now, that, that's no cost to the sheriff's office, the, those clinical services that are provided.
Which can actually be a huge financial burden to the sheriff's department if we have to take our inmates. Not only that, if it's to the clinic, when you, there are inmate, it makes a nightmare for the clinic to accept the... They have to make arrangements for the type of inmate it is to get them even in the door.
We have to bring them in the backside, side doors.
I, I would have liked to seen a better presentation, because I would like to see them numbers. I'd have no problem if them, if I had their numbers in front of me to say, this hundred and twenty-five thousand, this is the services we're doing. This is what we paid before. That should have been the present, to me, that should be the presentation to the community sale as well. That, because like I said, the, the whole Wilcourt thing, when we started this, look at the time it came in and look at the controversy.
Mike, it was before the COVID thing.
Oh. But we, but we had, but it was Peters on contract. I don't see that, is this, I would like to see some numbers to say, this is, in the end, what we paid, you know, how Peters' contract worked, and this is what we're saving.
I can tell you how Peters' contract worked. We paid his wages and his con, and his malpractice insurance.
Okay.
And we paid him sixty-five thousand.
And I wish we had, I wish, I'm just saying, I wish it would have been brought before us with them numbers to put, to show on the, on the record of, of where we're at.
Well, you just, you just had some testimony of what that, that amount was, so it is on the record. This is all recorded.
But it's, it's, it's not, it's not the factual numbers I'd want.
And, and I appreciate that. I would suggest, though, that it's, this isn't strictly a numbers scenario. It's a quality of services provided to our communities. And there are things that are essential to public health that aren't provided by the hospital, by any outpatient clinic, because that is a provision of individual medical care. We're the connection in public health between individual medical care and the needs of public health, program health. And there really is an essential connection there that needs to be provided. And I would suggest that that's regardless of the cost. Obviously, you have to be able to afford that in the budget, but it's still an essential service. It, it truly does matter. And if, if we did not provide our community health nurse, if Battle Mountain General Hospital were to, to go away, then we're reliant on the state. And the state will charge the county for the services.
I understand that. I, I don't see where there was any, I, I don't think the services before. The, the current services to me, I don't see that are any different than what we, we had before, and it's an added expense.
I'm gonna tell you, and this is where I'm passionate about this. I'm gonna give you an example and advocate for the sheriff's office. I had a rape victim come to me. There was no way she was going to that clinic, okay? No way. And so I got her over to the health nurse, and that was the only way I was gonna get her in and there and get her tested for being raped. Not only that, she wasn't gonna go to her parents. And if we did not have that service, she would have had no one to go to. And that's what that clinic is essential for, for those kids, for STDs, for rape. They're not gonna go to there. And so that clinic has to have a doctor, and when it was the health nurse, we had the state. Now, when we took it over, we have to have a doctor that oversees that. And so while that money, worth that money is, well worth it, that... And I can say, I'm gonna just say this on the record, cause my daughters come up, come out over it. My daughter was the one that was raped on prom. And she would have never come to me, because I had warned her, and she was on domestic violence. But she was raped on prom, and she wasn't coming to me. She went to the school that did nothing. The only way she would go was to the health nurse. And so, yes, I don't give a crap if we use that for that one thing or anything else. Those kids have to have somewhere to go. And so is that a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth it plus pain? The malpractice, absolutely, because those kids are not going to that, so it can be on their record like that. So, and I'm gonna point out.
For the record, I'm not against, I'm not against the, the nurse and to this level. I, I'm not. I'm questioning just the need for the nurse practitioner, for that ex, that big expansion to me, it's still expansion of government. That's, that's what I'm at.
NRS statute, right? It's like, to treat any person or group of persons with a communicable disease that is in infectious state imposes a risk to the public health and who has been exposed to such a communicable disease, right? There's, there's one, two, three, there's four line items that fall under that statute. It's County Board of Health, what we're doing, and we're setting it up per the law. And it's like, we went from having a health board that was controlled by the state, which I've never, I'm never for the state being in our business. Anytime that I say we can get the state out and we take over and control these things within our own power and our boards, that's what we do. And that's, and that's what we're doing. But it's like, it's just, it's, it's, it's being sold, I think, in the public that we're competing. We're not. I can tell you, I, I, I sent some body in my, in my own extended family down, just to, because it was easy to get into. They did their first initial thing, but where did she end up going? She went to the hospital for services. We didn't do them here. You know, so I, I think it's a, it's a collaboration, and we're working together. We're not trying to rob or steal business from our hospital. We're gonna let them do what they need to do. But under the, under the, the guise of the NRS, we're, we're following it. And I, and I think it's smart, because if we don't, I don't want the state back in here, taking over that, those powers. I don't.
And then you don't get services, cause you cannot get nurses.
So that, yes, the, the history that I'd like to point out is that, and I think to Mike's concern, is that the public perception is this was created during COVID for another option.
This position?
Yes, completely false, completely false. And, and I'm saying it on the record, and I'd love for anybody else to come in here and speak to it on the record, because it's, we need to get to the facts and, and the truth. And the truth is, this started with two commissions ago. And we were going down the exact road to where we ended up today. The only thing that we went above with is we hired a doctor instead of a nurse practitioner. But the whole purpose of that was, was to create a service, because at the time, they were bringing the nurse out of, I believe, Winnebago to come over here, and we were lucky to get him a day a week. So we had nobody there to provide anything for birth control, you know, to hand out condoms for STDs, for all these things that the kids run to a community health nurse to, to get. So we had none of them things happening, but one day a week, and sometimes they didn't even show up that day. So the county took back the, took this over and, and brought it back to local control, which is the, the big buzzword that all of a sudden during COVID really kicked off, and everybody thought that we did this just for local control and for people to have a choice. Never was the case. We were paying for the schooling of an individual that the hospital high graded from us, which, good for them and good for that individual. You know, it's, I think it's a wonderful thing. Everybody should be able to move up. But nothing has changed from the time that we started that through COVID to today. We're paying whether we pay the state and get one day a week, or we're paying whether we have them down here around the clock, serving our community, and have some say in how they serve our community. That's the only difference, but we're gonna pay, whether we're paying it to the state and not getting the service, or whether we're paying it to our people and getting the service.
We were paying it to the state and lolly service.
So, so if we pay it to the state, Bert, off of what you said, and Brandy, you, you can jump in too. So if we go back to the state, we're under their control, and it's gonna go back to your services, we're, are gonna be, we're, we're expecting we'd go back to one, like one day a week. You'll go under their control, and you, and they say, we might be open every other Wednesday? Or is it under control of, of, of this health board and what, how we use these services?
We would have no say.
I'm a retired county employee. I won't work, I don't work for the state, so it would be totally different.
But, but I just wanna make sure that the, the outside noise that's coming in on this being based around COVID, and, and I don't mean that disrespectful, that, that we, that we kinda stick to what the, why and how we got on this track. We got on this track because of their lack of service, and, and I think Ron can speak strongly to it, because the jail needs service, and, and that was what Dr. Peters was doing from the hospital originally, and then when he moved, we took him in, and we paid that so he could continue giving service to the sheriff's office and some of the things that are important. So it, it's pretty multifaceted, but it's not something that changed just through COVID. It's something that was, was in process well before COVID and two commissions ago to start getting this to where it is today. So I, I hope that helps.
But Dr. Peters on contract with the sheriff's office while it, before we, during part of the state, we were getting nothing there. So we contracted him through our budget.
Yeah, we were still paying, the county was...
So it's two south, so he was getting the county plus, so, okay.
He was on call for us. He'd come to our facility. We didn't have to take him to the hospital and pay the ER and all of that. We called Dr. Peters up in the middle of the night or whatever, and he'd come down to our facility.
It was a hefty contract, though.
Huh?
It was that expensive contract.
Okay, that, that's what I'm asking. That, that clarifies what I'm asking. So there's more to just saying it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollar contract to Dr. Peters. He gets it, if, if we contracted or bring a nurse practitioner in, they're gonna be able to, there's gonna be separate billing and, and outside of this, and so it could, it can exceed and go up, climb in expenditures to us and, and to the taxpayers.
While we had Dr. Peters, though, that was because we couldn't get to the county nurses because it was state.
Okay.
See? So, yeah, and it was above and beyond, and it started out at what, Robert, four hundred and fifty a month or something, and over the years it increased. But that saved us a buckload of money.
Nope, understandable.
This county and the sheriff's department, because he was there, you know? And it's the same with Dr. Wilcourt, the doctors, once Brandy came on board and things changed. We don't, we get a sick prisoner, and if we didn't have our county health nurse, we call them and they come up to our facility. We gotta take them to the emergency room. It's, it's very expensive, even though we get the Medicare deal. But that, that includes, we'd have to load them up, get, get deputies to haul them down there, cause they're in custody. Very, very expensive, and this works.
Okay.
It does for us.
So, and, and one more thing, that, that we can't provide that service under what, her qualifications. So that's why we have to have either a doctor or nurse practitioner. So that's, we aren't upgrading the service to get them so we can provide more. That's just what the minimum qualifications we can have to still provide the service to the jail and the other things that, that qualify in that.
Yep, I appreciate the discussion.
And I really would like to keep a focus on the fact that this isn't something that, that's going to have a profit and loss statement. Obviously, the, the numbers count and, and have to be budgeted, but it really is value to the community. And then that's why I didn't bring a presentation that, that spoke to that. I just, I didn't frame it that way in my own mind. And my apologies to you. I can understand the, the value of seeing those numbers on the spreadsheet. But eventually, you have to move past that and look at what the, the community deserves. And that, in my mind, goes back to the essential public health services. And, and some things that, that are a little bit difficult to define. If you could, could roll all of this conversation back to before pandemic times, if there had been a robust public health service in Lander County when that hit, we would have been much better able to, to mitigate some of the, the things that were put upon the county with, with no other option, because we were relying on... with with no other option, because we were relying on on what the state had available. So it it's those, those issues that you can't put it on the spreadsheet. And it gets down to to going from those ten items to fleshing them out. There are there are pages of of information that that support and augment these ten items and the those services. And that's what having partially what had a licensed clinician would make available to what we can offer to our communities. There there's much more than that. But it it's an an essential element, just like any of these others. And so that's why I strongly advocate for that clinician. And I would much prefer to see that clinician be a county employee for the items I I laid out earlier, which is the ability to grow, the ability to change and flex and and offer different services without having to renegotiate a contract. So that's the the position that I would like to have have all of you consider. Any other comments?
Nope, I'm good. Like I said, my questions, thanks, Bert.
Yeah, there's some public comment.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
I just, I just don't know the answer. Um, so when you say billable stuff, like bills, I'm assuming like if someone goes in and sees a doctor, it's like anything else, right? You they bill the insurance company, you get paid. Where's that money come? Does it go back to the county, or does it go to the physician that's seeing the client?
No, the county.
So it goes back to the county?
Yeah.
So then the county could actually make some of that money back that they're paying the physician and stuff like that, so.
De- defer the the cost of of that position, certainly. You you, you're never going to recoup in dollar amount, but.
But I'm just saying, for, it's not totally just a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars you can sum back.
No, and we're contracted with, I think, twenty, over twenty insurance companies already. Uh, we see the patients who don't have insurance. We do sliding fee scale. We offer a lot of services that the hospital just doesn't offer. If you don't have any insurance and you go over there, they don't offer you a sliding fee scale, they'll give you a payment plan. That's it. So we do see a lot of those patients, too. But it all goes back into the county fund. We don't do anything with it.
Actually, Brandy, that was my question. We do a sliding fee schedule, right?
We do.
And the hospital does not.
They don't. And we see the Medicare patients who don't have, like, the supplemental Medicare. We can see them over there, so that's good for them, too. We offer a lot of services the hospital just doesn't provide. We're a good, you know, we're a good separate entity. We're not competing. We're just a different.
I didn't know the difference between when it was state control to local control.
Yeah, no, it's good.
You know, and and the and the profit and loss margin is exactly that. If we're got some coming in, like, I'll I'll put it on the agenda, that that's something that's presented, so we see that piece. You know, just like Bert's budget and everybody else's. I I'm fine. I I appreciate the discussion, and like I said, I I I guess I wasn't fully educated to, but I had the questions and my questions were answered. Thank you.
I think Dr. Ross. Yes, so there were two individuals that submitted letters for public comment. I will read those. The first came from Jason Blake, the CEO of the Battle Mountain General Hospital. And this states, Dear Dr. Ross and members of the Lander County Health Board, though I'm unable to attend the Board of Health meeting on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, I want to ensure that my opinion and desires are restated for your consideration. I write with specific focus on Agenda Item Number Two of the Board of Health Agenda regarding the hiring of a full-time clinical, uh, full-time clinician to staff community health. As I have stated in past meetings, Battle Mountain General Hospital has an experienced medical staff that is ready and willing to assist Lander County to meet its community health obligations. However, BMGH does not support the competitive environment that has been created when the community health officer offers the same services to the same population as the county hospital district. Battle Mountain General Hospital has successfully provided primary, urgent, emergent, and long-term care services to the county for many years. We continue to seek opportunities to improve our services and provide for the needs of Lander County. I feel that there are better ways to utilize county resources and funding than to provide duplicative and competing services. During the last Health Board meeting, Dr. Ross stated that the services provided by the Community Health Office would not be competitive with the hospital's clinical services. I was grateful to hear his statement, as it opens the door for more collaborative opportunities in the future. One of these collaborative opportunities is the School Health Fair that's being planned with hopes of helping our Lander County kids make good health-related decisions. In closing, I ask again that you, ask again to consider the utilization of BMGH medical staff to fill some of the community health needs, which may reduce the budgetary strains of hiring a full-time clinician. I also urge and request that the Community Health Office discontinue providing competitive services with Battle Mountain General Hospital. Thank you for your service to Lander County, Jason Blake, Administrator, CEO, Battle Mountain General Hospital. Second ladder is from Amy Nelson. This states, Dear Lander County Commissioners, I'm writing to express my support for the funding of a full-time clinician to staff community health. As members of this community, we are all invested in the health and well-being of our neighbors and loved ones. And I believe that investing in this position is an important step toward ensuring medical access for all of us. Having a clinician on staff at our county health clinic would provide local control and choice for our residents when it comes to their healthcare needs. By having a licensed clinician available to provide care, diagnosis, and treatment, individuals in our community will have options and be better equipped to manage their health and prevent illnesses from becoming more serious. In addition to providing direct healthcare services, a clinician at the county health clinic would also serve as a valuable resource for Austin, Gilman Springs, and Kingston, as well as other agencies in our community, such as the jail. The plan to hire a local clinician for the county clinic was in the works several years ago. Then during the pandemic, when Battle Mountain General Hospital was mandated to follow guidelines and recommendations from governmental and public health authorities, including the governor, CDC, and State Health Department, the need for local control and choice became paramount. During the pandemic, there were several situations where the interests of the hospital and healthcare system conflicted with the interests of many of the residents. While they appreciate the challenge of our local hospital and healthcare system balancing their responsibilities to their patients and the community with their obligations and compliance mandates to public health authorities, many of us were left without local medical options. As an elected body of the county, you are called to represent us, your constituents. Funding one full-time clinician at the local level who is only beholden to Lander County is good stewardship. You are called to be fiscally responsible, avoid unnecessary expenses, ensure taxpayers get the most value for our money, and to make fair and informed decisions that benefit the community as a whole. This often requires difficult decisions and at times requires you to represent stakeholders for whom you personally are not in agreement, as is the case for some regarding this issue. I urge you to consider the significant benefits of funding a clinician at our community health clinic for Lander County residents, north and south. By doing so, you will be helping to ensure that our community has local control, has more services in the southern end of the county, and our residents have local options for accessing the care they need to lead healthy and productive lives. Thank you for your openness to feedback on this important issue. Sincerely, Amy Nelson.
Can I have one more thing to say? Everybody's probably horrified that I mentioned my daughter's name, but she would not be. When she was seen there by Brenda Keller, who was a phenomenal, phenomenal health nurse, did huge benefit for my daughter. She is now in the Navy. She is one of the top advocates um for sexual assault. Um, and she also, from all of her training, um has now become a Navy SEAL trainer. And so she is, you know, that it it made a difference for the person that was on the other end of that. And so that service, I could never pay my debt back to Brenda Keller, what she did for her. But it also, no, that my daughter would never be embarrassed that I said that, because that, she's announced that on a podcast on the USS Ronald Reagan that went worldwide. So I would didn't, wasn't leaking a secret. But I just, it's hard for me to say, because even after all the stuff and as close as we were, she still couldn't come to me. And I think that's why I'm more emotional than that. I mean, obviously, the incident that she could not come to me originally, but she would go to Brenda. And so flip side of it, she's turned out um as, excuse my language, but she's a badass, and she will um never go down without a fight. And has, there's five, five women, I was just telling Brian this, there's only five women trainers in the Navy SEALs, and she's one of them.
Congratulations.
So, thank you.
Is there any other public comment? No. With that, then, I would like to make a motion to the board to take a request that the county commission create an authorization to hire a full-time clinical staff, clinician staff member at the community health clinic.
A whole second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Ross. So, before we close,
Yes.
um, is it the same, I can ask for stuff to be put on like the health board's agenda, right?
Certainly.
Uh, that's one thing I would like to see is maybe once a quarter or once a year even at first, but to see treated.
The number of patients.
I wanna see the number of patients treated and and so on and so forth. I would like to, I I would like to be a see a separate piece of of inmates. I mean, that's information to me that can be, that's, sorry, I don't wanna use the wrong word, but I I would say marketable. To say, this is, this is, this just ain't this, this is what it is, and it 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 helps to the education of exactly where this is going.
Absolutely.
You know, maybe once a year, the the financials of what did we bill and what went back, so we can take the, so these numbers ain't so big and hitting people such as myself.
Commissioner, I believe that Dr. Ross does have a printout that Brandy provided um of patient scene and things like that. It does not have the the breakdown of financial, but it does have the breakdown of of patient scene over there.
That that's probably something that has to be built, because we really haven't done it, but yes, please.
Just like year to date.
Okay, thank you.
So we had six hundred and seventy-six patients seen.
So that's our, like, total. That's how many patients are, like, on our roster already that we would lose if we weren't offering services.
Tracy Price for the record, could you also put in there um types of things that they're being seen for? Could you get rid of that public perception of, you know, of the competition thing?
Absolutely, that's a very good idea.
Put some communication on it to where, yeah.
Maybe that's something we can.
Put in our newsletter, the things that we see over at the at the health clinic that the hospital does not see. And I know that we do refer as many patients to the hospital as possible, but I think that it's important to the community.
It's important to know, too, that we have to offer patients a place to go that's affordable for them, too. So we refer a lot of people to the hospital for imaging and labs and things like that. But if it's more affordable for them to drive to even Reno to get those things done, they're gonna go there. So it's not that we're promoting competition. We're just doing the best thing for them.
The question was asked to be asked in the last board. On the on the competition piece, that that wasn't my drive. It was, mine was looking at 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 the cost, and and at the time, it seemed to be like we're, it's just an, it's it's what we say we don't wanna do, and that's expansion. So I I think, like I said, tha- thank you. I definitely thank you for what you do.
Thanks.
Uh, and like I said, it's.
Dr. Ross, you were saying two hundred and seventy-six patients. From what timeframe?
These are all from January first.
From January first?
Okay. Wow, that's.
I think you were, you were interrupted in the middle.
Oh, yeah, two, two hundred and eighty-three year to date. And this year, we've seen nineteen inmates. And have charges for Medicare, Medicaid, a hundred and seventy-four, ninety-four. Um, self-pay, a hundred and ninety-three, sliding scale, sliding T-scale, forty-seven. So we are tracking those numbers, and and I think it makes very good sense to to put that together in a formal report to the the board and the community.
Thank you.
Uh, just in response to Tracy, that, it's not, it's a, it's a great idea to do it, but also you can answer a lot of those questions, and what we should be doing as a clinic is laid out in fourth, uh, four, three, nine, point three, six, oh. It's exactly what our duties are um as a county health board. Uh, four, three, nine, point three, six, oh, number one.
That speaks to infectious diseases.
NLS?
NRS, yes.
Yeah, I think that's just a lot of this um communication gap. I think the people don't realize that you're just following the MRS that it's been replaced with and offering stuff that needs to be there that isn't being offered or happening.
Are there any other comments from the board? Any other public comment? In that case, I will close out this session of the Lander County Board of Health meeting.
Thanks, Dr. Ross. Thanks, Brandy.
Second.
There was a motion to adjourn.
Oh, motion to adjourn, yes. At a second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Kathy, thank you. Bert, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so we'll move into item seventeen. Uh, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove letter of opposition for water rights application number nine, two, four, five, eight, T.
I don't think there's anybody here on this. Um, this is from last commission meeting, and Eric brought it up.
Yeah, there was a company called B-TAS. Yes, that's right, yep. They they bought a ranch that's been in existence down there for quite a while, and they've, I I forget how long they've had it. I've spoken with two protesters, that is, people that filed protests with the State Engineers Office. And I've looked online under the water right application number nine, two, four, five, eight, T, and tried to get what information I could. The protesters spoke to me yesterday evening and this morning um by phone. I have not discussed anything with B-TAS or co- tried to contact them yet. I was just trying to find out what it, you know, what was going on. What they've done is, at least according to the protesters, is, this is uh floodwater, basically, that they're hoping to utilize. The protester's problem with it is that the the ditch is an old ditch, and they're there, this isn't their words, this is my interpretation of their words. They're worried that this is a backdoor to try to get water rights that they probably don't have a a good right to. And worse, from a lot of people's perspective, and especially from a statutory perspective, they say that when the water goes into that particular ditch, it doesn't go back to the to the river, and it doesn't get utilized. It ends up being wasted out in the desert, basically. It's used for some irrigation, but what they don't use for irrigation just ends up sitting in the ditch until it dries up. Doesn't help anything. So um that's why they're protesting. The protest itself is out of the ordinary, because it's a temporary permit. That's why you've got the T on there. And uh, there is no date. Like, I I thought, I I saw a date listed on there about May eleventh, so I was concerned to put it on the agenda uh because I thought we might run out of time. But apparently, there is no, that that's for something else, and there is no uh absolute date. They just normally don't have these. So I'm not sure what you want me to do. I'm not sure if I can even recommend anything to the commission at this time. But those are the concerns. Again, I haven't yet talked to B-TAS. I only got hold of the the two protesters last night. I tried to get hold of the uh State Engineers Office person assigned to it. According to the website, it's an Eric, I think, Schrader, something like that, Schneider, something. And I left a message, but I haven't had any uh phone calls back. So that's my update. I don't quite know what's going on, but it sounds like some folks who do care about it have already put in. I don't know if you wanna still do something or not. Three thousand acre feet, though, is a significant amount of water, anybody that knows anything about it. That, if that set a precedent that they would have water down the road, that would definitely create problems. Uh, so I can see why the concern, having said that again, I haven't talked to BTAS, I don't know what their position is.
You know, I, I think it's real hard for folks like ourselves in the commission to take sides on this when we don't know both sides. But like our counselor pointed out, it, it's a lot of water. And if nothing else, we could certainly question the amount of water and tell them our concerns, something like that.
Maybe that was the way to phrase it, I could possibly come up with a letter expressing that the county is concerned because of the amount of water.
Yes, that, that would be my suggestion.
But at the end of the day, right, we can, we can have a letter of opposition, but it's still going to be between that landowner and the state water department, whether it's granted, right? We, we have no authority.
Yeah, the state engineer, the only authority that we would have is if you wanted to actually join in a formal protest.
Right.
Which I, I don't know of us ever doing that.
Right.
That didn't happen when I was working for high and I haven't heard of it happening.
So I'd just like the commission to be aware that they did contact me previously and asked me to write a letter of support for the temporary diversion while the, the big runoff years were. And I reached out to the other two water right owners in there that, that would be affected and neither one of them were in favor of that because I was going to put it on obviously the agenda for your guys' approval to write that letter. When the other two did not support that, I, you know, just simply reached back out and said, you guys are going to need to send me letters of support from the other people that are involved. Otherwise, I consider this a civil matter and you guys need to deal with it civilly because it's probably not something that's going to be in front of the commission. And then it came back around through another avenue, um, back before you guys, through another one of our boards. So I just wanted that back history to be with you guys, that this has been discussed previously through my office.
The only thing is I've been talking with some people and I could be wrong, I definitely could be wrongs. But, but I think we're dealing with two different temporary attempts to move floodwater. But they're both because of the extra snow melt and then, and there's concerns from both sides. You want my opinion, yeah, I think at this point it'd be better to stay out of it other than to maybe express concern because again, three thousand acre feet is a lot.
Well, I, I think it's hard to make any decision without knowing both sides.
Right.
It's almost impossible.
So probably what you suggested, Bill, would be a good idea, maybe write a letter, just kind of.
Okay.
Feeling it, I don't know, you guys think about that?
I don't think we ought to get involved in the state engineer's business. It's none of our, you know, we haven't got the right to say yea or nay on what he can do. I think it should stay with the state engineer, they should make the decisions.
I'm fine, any direction?
It's not.
We can just leave it, that's fine.
They can bring us more facts if they want to push it.
Well, again, I think, what's that?
They, they, they want our support either way, you'd be, that's, they can approach us and make the contact and give us the facts on both sides and then we can make a decision, that's what I feel. I'm with JR, I just, water rights is a messy deal.
It's, it's likely to be over.
They've got lots of lawyers working along the way.
Okay, so looks like we'll take no action on that item. So we'll move into eighteen, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove allowing Landmark County retiree employees purchase health insurance at their own cost up to age sixty-five complaint with NRS two eight seven point oh two three.
Okay, I was the one that put that on, so they can have information for me.
We kind of both do, and if I'm understanding you, correct, you are where we already provide Cobra, right? But what you're asking is the optional NRS to be in place by staying because you're asking for the retired employees to pay out of their pocket to stay under our umbrella, but not through Cobra at, up until they're sixty-five.
Yeah.
Because we already offer it through Cobra, but you can only stay on Cobra for eighteen months. And that employee has to pay two percent of whatever that premium is out of their pocket plus the additional premium.
Yeah, and so I'm just asking that we pay the, the retirees, that's looked at the retirees pay the, under the umbrella, pay the full amount of the premium that the county pays, um, and that at age sixty-five, they be kicked off of Medicare. Well, the different people I was talking to had made some different suggestions, I don't know if that's, this part is even possible or not, that if you, for as far as retirees go, you can stay with so many years of service, like after twenty years or twenty-five years and then you're kicked off at sixty-five. Because obviously, you know, Medicare is available. And from the way I look at it, when I tried looking, uh, talking to some different retirees that kind of fall in a donut hole, looking at the state insurance on the state market, they, that about twelve, fifteen hundred dollars a month and it doesn't cover Medicaid, certain specific medications. So for me, example, as an example, and I'm doing this as a citizen, not as a county commissioner, I'm a former county employee, that feel roughly cost me about two grand because they won't, none of them will cover my insurance, my medications at all. And so, and I know there are other employees, long-term employees that, PEPS does it, you can't, because I had contacted them to try to figure out. And they looked up to see if there was a possibility that I could do it through them and they said, no. If you're a state employee, you're able to do that as well, they'll let you, um, under that NRS, they will let you purchase your insurance through them till you're sixty-five. But they kick you off at sixty-five. Some of the other counties I found out, I think it's Larchell and Clark County, which I don't know how they're even able to do this, they're not kicking people off at sixty-five, so they have ninety-year-olds still on their insurance that's causing their rates to go up because they are ill and it's making their bottom line go up that way. And so I was just throwing it around and.
Is the state, when the state does it, do they have a age or a time requirement put in to be on it?
No, they just say, I, um.
As long as your retirement rate could be five or sixty, ten year, you still have the option to buy it to sixty-five?
And you have to be kicked off, go ahead.
Sorry Kathy, Lincoln, so for the record, you said you did reach out to PEP and they said no?
They said, because I wasn't, um, because I was, because I was confused how the whole thing worked because I wasn't ever sure, um.
Because we still have past county employees on there that we didn't enforce.
Yeah, because they fell at the year where the government, where the, um.
When we grandfathered them all in.
When you grandfathered, they were all grandfathered in. And so I didn't, I wasn't able to retire at that age, um, so.
So you had to have been on it before that date, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I would have had to have been, um, on it, I would have been able to retire, they gave a retirement date, you have to retire by this date and you'll receive it or you can't get it.
I was taking it the other way.
I thought it was years when you worked for the county.
Oh, um, they, you had to, that's why Jane Ripley, Kayla, all those, those people, and Don Bohal, all those people quit at the same time and retired because they said, and then they kicked them off at sixty-five. So, um, because yeah, hours and hours on the phone, because I did, I did try that.
So I guess my only concern with this then would be the administrative portion of it. Um, I know that Liz and I both have the same concerns, right now with Cobra, there are third-party administrators, so they essentially do all the work. The county does have to pay a fee to our insurance provider, Anthem, for allowing those Cobra people to be on there. But they do all the work in collecting the money, they send the money to the county. And so we, we don't have to worry about going in and getting that payment from the retiree and, you know, making sure we're getting reimbursed.
But it's not, not only that, it's the, our insurance is pulled through our payroll deduction. So it's a matter of if this was approved, we would have to set up, I would assume, some sort of line item that has funds in there to be able to pay that, even if we don't have the money recouped from the retiree. And then we would have to invoice the retirees to pay that because all of our insurance is done through payroll deduction.
So my question would be, how is the state good?
That, well, that's the other counties, because all the other counties do it and I don't know, that would have to be a question.
Uh, some of the other counties, because it's an option NRS and I know Humboldt County has denied it and refused it for the simple fact of what we're discussing right now, they don't have the administration.
The state uses a third-party administrator, they use PEP. And so we, we, we use PEP as well for the people that were on it before they cut the county employees off. But state employees can still get on PEP, but PEP does the exact same thing as Cobra, they do all the work and they get the plans in place and they're in contact with the retiree and then they invoice the state entity or the county entity, this is what you got to pay for this month for these people that were on there.
And the difference with PEP and Cobra is, is I don't believe that PEP has that eighteen-month cutoff whereas Cobra does.
Yeah. See, and that's the thing, like eighteen months isn't doing anyone any good. And so my one question was, it came, can you put on to where with like so many years of service, that so many years of service, even though I, I don't know how that works with the NRS, because that, see, it's just a hand, you'll only have a handful of people that fall in that donut hole that put that many years in.
So you're saying that they, if they, if, they, they have to have at least like ten or so years of service with the county before they can utilize this option?
Well, I was actually going higher than that actually because I was thinking, you know, even if you had, for example, twenty, twenty-five years of service with the county, that, and that you got kicked off at sixty-five, you have a lot smaller pool of people than everybody who, you know.
Because that would be, yes, I agree, that would be tough.
My, my idea.
That would be a whole other ballgame for me.
No, and see, twenty, and I was thinking twenty-five years, honestly, twenty-five years of service you had to have.
Then you could go on.
And then, um, you paid it and at sixty-five you got kicked off. And, um, and even if I had to pay it, the two percent, have to have for the pain in the butt, it would be, I would, because like I said, there's no way I can. And there's other people, you know, that follow the same thing, they're too young for Medicare and you're, um, so you're, you're stuck in the donut hole and, and, um, I actually had Tim help me try to find and there was, there, you know, give me ideas. He didn't look, he said, look here, look here, I called back and he just said, it's just, it's, there's no way. My entire retirement would go to paying for insurance.
So I guess my question would be then, um, if we did implement something, would we have to pay a fee to Anthem to have those retirees on there like we do with the Cobra retirees?
I've been talking to Tim about this and he, he says it's not really going to increase our rates much because they're already on the plan. He also doesn't think that there would be much of a fee to do it. We already offer employees when they leave and they have, it's in our policies that when they leave and they have their sick leave and they have so many hours on their sick leave, they can turn that sick leave into years of service for PERS. They can turn that sick leave up to twenty thousand dollars for insurance. Or they can do a cash out benefit of, I think it's five thousand dollars right now, right? So we have a couple of them that have turned their sick leave that has over the twenty, twenty thousand dollars, so there's twenty thousand dollars. We put in a line item for them right now and we, they are still on our insurance. So it's kind of similar to that, but other, the only difference is, is we're maintaining that fund balance. We're pulling it from that versus actually going to the retiree employees.
But, I mean, that's how I see it, is you're giving a, it's a, you're giving a benefit to a county employee for longevity, is one. So that's a plus point. Two is, is not costing you anything money, well.
It's not.
What I'm saying is, is that, you know, the, they're paying for their own insurance, but it does create a, an extra workload, so that would be the, that would be the cost that would be created.
So the workload's going to fall on me and I, I wouldn't be opposed to it as long as we had that year's of service cap. Because if you just leave it open and then everybody that retires, because you do have these young people that come in and, and if they retire, you know, and they leave, you leave it kind of in a gray area, but if you had that years of service cap in it, then it kind of does keep it at a small pool that could do that. My other question would be is we do have a couple of employees that are on that, where they've used their sick bank and they're doing that and they're on our plan already for about, I think it's eight or ten months is a few of them. Would this apply to them if you do implement that because they are going to ask that as well?
If they have the years of service?
Yes.
Well, I think if the years of service, but honestly, I think that, and does anybody have public comment for like twenty-five years? I just think it's, makes it, because they're, like I said, they're only going to handful, handful that's going to fall in that donut hole. The majority of people are going to already get Medicare, but you have the ones like, I mean, I started when I was eighteen and so when I retired out, um, I was, I was forty-eight years old.
Yeah, and the two that we.
So I fell into a donut hole, um.
But the thing that happens is, is the insurance that you buy individually doesn't cover all that we do, such as dental and vision. But it's a whole lot less expensive than what we are paying per employee. So they probably would opt to do something else rather than stay.
Fifteen, no, it's not, no, it is not, it's fifteen hundred dollars a month. And it, and not only that, it covers zero.
I, I know, I self-insured a long time too.
That is ludicrous, there's no way.
But the ones, the ones that, that need to stay are the ones that are uninsurable.
Well, and so twenty-five, sorry, I think with twenty-five years of service and if they're willing to pay their own premium until sixty-five, it's, it's, you're going to have a handful of people.
But I'm saying if they're, if they're insurable, they might be getting something else instead.
And that's their option, she's saying, yeah.
That's their option, it's not mandatory.
She's just saying, give them the option.
So what I'm pointing out is the ones that are staying with us are the ones that are really uninsurable.
My, my question is, and, and Patsy may be able to answer this, she's been in a lot of insurance, does that affect our overall rate as part of being the pool?
Yes, if they're on our plan, they would be.
Okay, so, so that would be, I guess would be the concern is what does this do to the bottom line for everybody else that's paying into it? By maintaining, because I know that when, when Tim comes in and he sits down in front of us, he tells us, you know, this is how many claims you had and this is what it does to your bottom line because of the claims.
And the cost.
Yes. Correct, so I'm not sure if that affects it or not, but.
No, I think if, yeah, I think it would be, if you had, that's why, because he was the one that had told me about the other counties that leave them on past sixty-five. Because he said they kick them off at sixty-five, so, um, if they're, you know, they start to have health, start to have health problems and stuff like that, they have to go to Medicare. And he said that other counties that don't, um, that these people don't realize that Medicare works as long as you know how to work it. But then like I said, you have the other, there's a handful of us that, you know, twenty-five years of service and you're in a donut hole and, um, you're out of.
But then, I mean, you've got to be careful, you don't want to, I mean, I don't want to be looked at like, hey, we're creating this just for these people that are in this donut hole.
No, no, I'm just saying that.
There's almost an element of, that's what I'm saying, it has to be sensible in, in the fact that you don't want other employees, well, the only reason you created this is for these people in the donut hole. What about these people that have twenty years in, you know, it's like, that's what I would want to be careful about.
That would be after, it's something you guys, I was just trying to figure out a way that you have a closer, you'd be closer to, you'd be closer to sixty-five. You know, that's where I, where I'm aiming with that year.
And the, off of what Pat, Commissioner Waite said, I mean, that's, that's a worry. Is, it is down to somewhat of the uninsurable that comes with huge costs. I mean, if, at a certain point, I mean, you're starting to see companies down to insurance because you can't, you can't afford it for your employees, private, public, everything. It's changing, it's, it's an excellent plan at a, at a definitely a good cost. My, my concern is just, boy, you don't have cost control in that. In eighteen months of Cobra, they also, I mean, people can go out and seek to start getting disabilities and Medicaid and, and some of that, that's plenty of time.
That doesn't work, you know, it would be nice if it worked that way, but if I tried to, I'm now, I'm on, and I'm going to even use myself as an example. I'm on, I can't get Medicare, Medicaid or anything like that, they would just take my retirement. And so I think that you look at, and people, there's no way that somebody's going to stay with a company for twenty-five years, I don't believe, for insurance. If you're, you're going to stay with a county, uh, like for Landmark County, you're going to stay somewhere because you like where you're at. And that's why I stayed all those years and it's not all about me because I know a handful of other, very small pool of other people who stayed because they loved their job and they loved what they did, um, and still do. I don't think you're going to have people just staying because, oh, I'm going to make, I just don't think that. You're, you have people who hop and then people who stay. And that's why I thought if you did it at, you know, twenty, twenty-five years, however, you know, whatever you guys thought, that it would, you're happy, you're closer to sixty-five to be kicked off, um, and, yeah, I, I, you know.
Well, maybe it's something we could have Tim come and speak on behalf too, which would ask some of those group questions, what's due to our raise, this and that, get a little bit more data on it. Because I think there could be some benefits to, to help create that longevity of, of type of employee, but it's like at what cost, you know, so it's like it's.
You know, the, the hard part is, because I, I've been in insurance over fifty years and I worked for the insurance division and I sold individually and I've worked for large companies and I do know insurance. And I know that a lot of people will be working jobs for nothing but the insurance. That's that important because they can't buy individual insurance and they have pre-existing. So if you join a company, you usually have to wait so long before pre-existing's even covered. And people have made so many critical decisions. And people have made so many critical decisions on where they work, how long they work, for nothing but insurance. So it, it is key and it's important and I understand everything you're saying.
So you're thinking, you, do you think this is a good idea, is that what you're saying?
No, I don't think it's a good idea, I think that too many people have made decisions all their life based on this. And it's like, so you retire at age fifty and what do you do? You should get another job with insurance if you can't buy an individual policy. And this life decisions are made every day with hundreds of thousands of people. So how we can make the decision for just a few is very difficult for the county.
One idea.
Will hurt us, um, not financially a little bit for what we're doing because we have to handle all this. And the other thing is, if if, if Anthem even lets us do that, cause some, some policies, if you're, if you're not lucky.
That is, Anthem's will let us do it, but it may, Anthem's will let us do it, but it may come at a cost, but I, without Tim.
So, so let me ask you Liz, because right now we have one employee on, using Cobra. And we pay, the county has to pay eighty-nine dollars a month to Anthem to keep that employee, the county.
And that fee is based off of how many people is on our Cobra.
Yeah, and we don't get that reimbursed, we just get the, the premiums reimbursed. And so we pay the premiums for the retiree and then we get a check from Cobra to reimburse us and we just put it back into the line item and we paid it out of. But if we have, if we implement something like this, do we have to let Anthem know we have so, so many retirees on our.
Yes.
Because the people that we're paying for out of their sick leave, I don't believe that's happening, is it? Because we're not paying a fee on them that I'm aware of.
We're not paying a fee on them, but I don't, we, I don't believe we have to notify them as if they are retired employees because. It is implemented in our policy that that is an option, so I have had sent. So I sent the policy to Anthem's and they know it's in the policy, so they accept it.
So if we implemented something like this, we would have to notify Anthem of those employees and possibly.
And that's why they mandated the federal insurance, because before that, before Cobra, it stopped. I mean, boom, you are off that, the end of the month that you left your company. So it does give people a little bit of flexibility, it's more expensive to everyone, but that was the whole point, so we didn't cut them off. When they were in the middle of maybe even a surgery or something like that and that does happen, so, um.
Um, when I asked him about if it would cost more, um, he said it doesn't cost, there's not an extra fees on that, it costs what the county is. Um, because of the way the NRS was written, so this is my understanding, and I can be said correctly, this is what my understanding was, is that. Because the way uh, NRS is um, written, that it, um, there isn't any, you pay the, what the county is paying in.
And I would need Anthem's to give that us, to us in writing.
Because we have to pay, we are paying a fee for the Cobra, but I don't know if that has something to do with Cobra or retired, I don't know. Because we have to, but we have to pay Anthem, the county has to pay Anthem an administrative fee to administer this for a Cobra.
Because it's federal.
Yes, but, but it's essentially the same thing, it falls under the same NRS.
Someone who chooses to charge you the eighty-nine dollars.
Mm-hmm, so I, that's why I'm asking, would they do that for these people as well?
And so when I asked on PEPs how theirs were, they just, um, for those interstate employees, they just run it through, and I know. They just run it through their system, they just, the people pay in, and if they don't pay in, they just get cut off the insurance, it's just like. Um, they don't, I don't think they get to pay and come back, I don't think that that's, and that's something you have to put in your policy. If you don't pay on time, you get cut off and you don't get to rejoin, you know, so you're not, the county's not springing with people doing that, you look there, you. Can't be on it, but uh, PEPs had said that their, their retired employees just, um, that they just pay in. And, um, their policy, and I didn't know any other act questions like that to ask, so I'm not, I'm trying to. Can you not know, I, I just don't know that Tim had said that, um, that. The, how the other counties were doing it, they just, um, they don't really.
Well, I can uh, get Tim to come back and we can, we can re-present this and um, discuss it then if you guys would like.
That's fine, I would like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go into correspondence, reports, future agenda items.
Yes, so I, I did save some of my um, earlier report because Commissioner Chop wasn't here and you had a few questions at the last, last meeting. So I wanted to make sure I get that back and then, um, also kinda give a brief update of what you guys already heard from. The pool pack conference that I went to, um, this last Thursday and Friday. So, um. Another thing that's on my list here is we are working with Elko County and their commission meeting uh, system. We had a meeting, was that yesterday, day before, my days are running together, we had a meeting in the last couple of days on. Yesterday, sorry, um, on these, uh, yes. On the system that they use and um, the one that we're using currently for our commission meetings are for the court systems. And that's part of the issues that we're having when people try to log in, is the security walls are so thick that we can't upload videos and do different things, they block them. So we're trying to get one that's more commission meeting friendly, so I am following up on that. Um, then for the average years of service here in Lander County, we're averaging nine point nine. And the average in government employment is two point eight. Um, and our turnover rate is at three point four and the national average is eighteen to twenty-four percent in government. Um, you can look them up on uh, any of the government websites, that's uh, is there's. Um, labor statistic data straight from the um, Labor Commission of, you know, that runs around and does all these reports. Um, then I also wanted to update you guys on credit cards, so our uh, judge, uh. Ms. Denise, she wasn't able to be here, but she wanted me to run something by the commission and possibly put this back on for a future agenda item if you guys would like. But, um, she does not want to have to uh, get the tax exempt because justice court. All of her fees are paid for by grants or um, by the Supreme Court pays for all of her classes, so when she goes and gets a room. And does all these things and doesn't use the tax exempt. All the taxes are on the, show up on her card, Juicy's reaching out to her saying, hey, you got all these taxes on here, you need to reimburse the county for the taxes. She's saying that she doesn't feel that's proper because, um, these are already reimbursed to the county through her grants and through the Supreme Court. So with the county getting a hundred percent of their money back, um, she's not. Super in favor of having to submit our tax ID and going forward with that, so I'm throwing this out there, the credit cards are, are not mine, they are Juicy's. But um, Denise did stop in my office to ask if I would report that and if we need to add it to a future agenda item, we certainly can.
So, off of that, if she puts in for the, I mean, ours, Supreme Court and Justice Court's still tax exempt. And if that's all she submits, that's all we're gonna be reimbursed, correct?
She's talking about for like her meals and uh, other things that she purchases. You know, if she does it, she goes somewhere and she's paying for something out of her pocket, whether it be for her coffee or whatever it is. She's saying that those places have taxed and it's being reimbursed through the grant, so she shouldn't have to ask them to be tax free.
But bottom lines, taxpayers in the long run still paying the tax when they shouldn't have to pay the tax because they're governmental agencies, they shouldn't be charged tax.
Yeah, so I'm uh, I'm just simply updating that and if uh, when you guys see the credit cards come through some of the, some of the receipts. And the tax on some of Denise's, you guys are aware of what's going on there. And uh, like I said, that policy is between the commission and and Juicy to make sure that it's upheld, she has not signed the, the new agreement. Um, which is something else to, you know, maybe the commission would wanna sit down and talk with her about.
So, let me ask you this, so how hard is it to, so for example, you go out to this training, you sit down to eat breakfast. They charge you tax, how hard is it to let them know that you're taxing them, is it just showing them a card?
I, no, I have a tax exempt status that I carry.
Okay.
And I've tried it with a couple places and they said, you have to fill out a whole application, it goes before our corporation board.
So, as well, we do like, if I travel somewhere, and I haven't done this, I think this uh, this last trip that I took was the first time that I've ever even asked Lakin. About the process of this, but, um, you can get travel advances, so they pay for your meals, they give you, they just give you, here's twenty dollars for your dinner. Here's, you know, fifteen dollars for your lunch and they, you get your advance, so they give you your money and if you spend thirty dollars, you spend thirty, if you spend ten, you spend ten. It, it doesn't matter, but you get your travel advance because they have a set rate for each meal for everything, so. So there's ways to get the advances and and pay to the limit of what it is. If you can't get tax exempt and I, and Lakin can speak much more to it, cause I'm not very familiar with.
Well, Lakin and I did have a conversation with Judge Bunch, um, we did explain to her the past way vouchers were done, she could do them in advance. She wasn't aware that we did bill runs every week now, um, she is now aware of that. She, so we've explained, you can do your vouchers in advance or you can keep your receipts and you can submit them and that will credit you back everything other than the tax. Um, she didn't say she wouldn't sign the agreement, she said she had some issues because she felt that she was under Supreme Court. I said, you still have to abide by county policy, she said she understood that, but she also did have a conversation with Lakin that said. If this was an issue, she didn't have a problem getting rid of her credit card and moving towards the voucher, so I don't think it's a matter that. She cares either way, she'll go back to the vouchers if she has to, if you guys don't allow her to use tax, I, we've had multiple.
Are the vouchers an easy system?
Yes.
So that's, that's my concern because the credit cards were never made to be used on Starbucks five times a day when you're at class or. Pan Express, because, yeah, it's hard to get out of that tax and that's why we have the travel advance forms and you're only supposed to get a certain amount. Each day for breakfast, lunch and dinner and it also prevents someone from going and paying two hundred dollars out of the county money on a county credit card. For dinner for five people, because that has happened before too and you're, it's for you and you only for going to these travel. To these conferences and classes and this is what you get per meal and that should be it, but it's, that's not how it's happening right now with the credit cards.
If it's, yeah, you're referring to easy system, that's what we should do.
Yeah, so I, I, yeah, we can, we can put this. Yeah, no, no, we can put this on a future agenda item just so we don't get caught up in discussion on it, it's a, it's part, part of an update.
Um.
I have a question, I'm just, I mean, I looked at the backup, the, I don't know if it's Juicy or, I think, put it out there, one. Where they show what everyone's breaking down, if they pay their taxes, they put their name and ex listed taxes paid or whatever, right? Um, I would assume, you're wrong, um, but if the Supreme Court's paying their back. Then eventually it's all gonna come out on the spreadsheet, and they pay in total, I'm assuming Juicy would put in there, just pay in total and they're covering the taxes and that's when they eventually show that the taxes were paid. So I have a need or do you?
I just wanna put on the record, this is not just Judge Fortune that this is happening on, this is multiple people that are using their cards at conferences and classes.
Cause we'll put it on our future agenda.
And the others, other people do not get reimbursed for their charges.
That's what I'm saying, but the ones that do, I would assume if you get paid your full amount back, then it wouldn't be the county's, county's still getting their taxes paid, it's just listed.
Yeah, I said, no, but it's still going against the card, card policy.
Yeah, we just don't wanna get into the discussion, I bet at this point.
Yeah, so we could put it on a future agenda item.
Yep.
Um, and then, uh, and then, so, part of this pool pack conference is what I was telling the commission is that I would, I would like if any of the commissioner, next year, it was their annual conference. And they had people from all over the world that came in that updated us on, um, bonds, um, stocks, interest rates, everything. And how the ca- how county's money is in the pool of insurance that we're in and it represents seventeen other states and including us and other counties that are in it. And um, right now, we're currently in a hard market, whereas if something were to happen and we had some big claims and we're be either kicked out of the pool. I didn't know could be done, but I guess can be, um, or if we opted out and wanted to go join another pool somewhere. Um, that it would be very hard to get into because they don't let anybody into the pools in a hard market typically because of. Dirties, the dirties the water more or less for them and it also, uh, it's also, we have some. Up to from twenty-five to forty percent, um, insurance rates going up. Uh, because of some of the things that are happening around from, um, they went into airlines and and what they're, what they're doing, they had a huge. Through COVID, a huge amount of pilots leave, so they had to up the rates for the pilots by thirty percent just to keep what they have, um, truckers. Across, across the line, so I know it's a lot of information, but it's a wonderful thing to go to and see what they're, what they're giving us. And how our rates are changing and what kinda rates we have to look at in the future that are gonna change, even being part of the pool. And being a good member of the pool, um, our rates are still gonna climb and they were going into things that happened in Texas, the freeze down there. Took a great big winter, we had flooding, um, to, um, uh, Florida's hurricanes. So, these are all things that affect us and we don't realize affect us on a, on a national level, they do fall back into, into us in the pool that we're involved in. Um, so if you guys can make a picture.
Bert, was this your first pool pack meeting?
No, no, uh, this is the first one where I've ever had enough dollars to understand.
First annual? Okay, okay, because, you know, Brian, Brian is our representative, but up until their annual meeting. Every meeting they've had has been on our commission day.
So those are the leadership conference ones that we go to, these are the annual board meetings.
Yeah, no, I know it was annual.
Which was last week, right?
Yes.
So it was opposite of our meeting this year.
So the, and the annual one, the, this is where they pull, like I said, everybody from all over the country and state, it's, it's a.
I'm glad you're in.
Yes, the more I'm understanding, it's, it, it.
It affects us big time.
Yep.
Um. And it seemed like there was something else. I guess if there was something else, I'll reach out to you guys, but if you guys have anything you'd like to add. And I hope does that, did that answer some of your questions?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so we'll have, um, any other agenda items?
So, I, I had reached out to, um, Commissioner Sparks. Yeah, the month of May, both the set dates, I am totally unavailable for. One, my son's getting a corneal transplant on the second one, we'll leave that Wednesday, on the eleventh, I leave. I'll be in the remote mountains in a tent, I guess, so I could go the, the day before if, if. We agree that everybody could make an earlier, the, the day earlier on the eleventh and another date. Or if, if we're fine without me, then I'm fine, but I just, I wanted him to know that the month of May is terri- is just terrible for me. I have no way to set, reset Nolan's eye appointment, so, nor do I want to.
We're fine, we can still conduct business, so.
Okay.
We do need to set, um, a, a time for Austin.
Yes, that's right. I, do you have one more thing?
Yes.
Um.
So I did reach out to. I gotta dig it up here. To Brian Hardy's office and had them do a uh, quick review because I know we're coming up on budget for the Conservation District. Um, and on all the documents that they have there, I will provide you guys his, his opinion. Um, and I think that the, the intent here, or at least my understanding of the intent from the commission. Was to just see if they, if what we, what is going on and the, and I believe Commissioner Spark sits up board, his concerns were. As if we're making sure that we're following kinda the, the proper channels of, of expenditures. Um, based off of uh, Mr. Hardy's letter, which I will give to, I will put in each of your guys' box where I can. Um, have Carly quickly make copies of this and give them to you before you leave today. Um, I think that it may be in our best interest to either have a closed session and uh, and further discuss this. Or uh, or to just put it, put it very bluntly, as you guys can, can direct however you would like for us to proceed forward. But there are concerns and there are clear things that if we were to further our records request into the voting record and disclosures. Um, that would, would show impropriety, um, if they were not properly disclosed. I don't know that that's the direction that this commission wants to go, but I do know that it's uh, it is clear in his letter where this could go if we furthered the uh. The public records request and we're giving the, the full, I did forward him everything that we were given through my public records request previously. Um, but in that, there were not, um, clear voting records or, um, disclosures, so.
So, where this is a letter based on that from our attorney, is that something that, that should be given to us just for. Is it just free information or is it something that should be discussed in litigation?
No, this can be given to you guys uh, individually, it's not, it's not necessarily something that I, that would hurt to be public because it's not, but it's not a. It's also not something that I wanna put on the agenda and make a, a spectacle out of, I think that it's, it's a matter of some course correct. I've, I've been through that wringer and I don't wish it on anybody, so, um, I think we just need to figure out how to course correct here.
Okay, so then do we just, um, nothing that needs to be agendaized, cause we can call a litigation meeting at any point in time, so.
Yes, I believe we need to at some point, um, call a litigation meeting and that, that would be our, our district attorney's and then we can uh. Discuss how you guys wanna do this because with budget coming up. and then we can, uh, discuss how you guys wanna do this, because with budget coming up, we do need to have some answers so we can give that to the Conservation District on how we want to.
We probably need to do it next meeting because it's coming up, we need to decide what we're doing on funding, so.
Okay, and is it next, is it next?
That's what I'm gonna have.
Are you gonna be gone? Okay, so, and, and, and it's entirely, if Bill would like to, uh, to do that, we could do that at the end of this meeting as well, I mean.
Up until that day at eleventh, I'm here, the eleventh is when I, I go. So if it's one day earlier, I would be able to make it, I just, that's the day I leave in the morning.
So you won't be at the eleventh meeting?
I can't make the eleventh or the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Yes, so if, uh, if we wanted to do that, then we could all review this.
Huh?
Are you going TDY for the whole month?
What's that?
It's for a duty assignment.
Oh. One's vacation, one's medical.
Um, and, and I'd just like the commission to know, the only reason that Bill doesn't have this or the commission didn't have this sooner is because I received it last night at about six o'clock, um, so printed it off this morning, sitting in front of me, got to review it, so. That's.
Hope we look at it, Brian, we need to move, we could still, do we, or do we have to set the date to this meeting, or can you?
Yes, we do.
When do we have to approve the budget?
Um, it will be.
Is that the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, the next, next meeting is when we're gonna put most of the budget items back on. I think the final budget, the approval of that is the, is the first of the following month, so.
The twenty-two, I think.
That will be the, that will be our final, we have to have everything final and. So everything that's left for the budget that needs to go in the.
Budget, I have outlined to go on the next meeting, May eleventh.
Cause Lakin does need time to install it and then submit it.
Can I ask for it to be moved one day back to the den?
Yeah, so on the eleventh meeting, if we, if we have the litigation meeting, that, should we move that meeting to the eleventh so all commissioners can be present for that?
The tenth.
Oh, sorry, to the tenth, yes.
Hundred percent your guys' discretion, we'll do whatever you like us to.
Yeah, so I think, I think.
Yep, I'll be here on the tenth, yep.
I think on litigious type stuff, we need to have all, all people present, yeah.
So you want a separate meeting?
No, 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 just, uh.
Oh, just move the whole.
We'll just do a, we'll just do a meeting on the tenth, can we do that?
Well, let's just make sure our legal can be present, because that's a requirement.
He, he can, I, I'll figure it out.
Okay.
Discussing that.
Do we have things on the agenda to approve or not, when we change a meeting like that?
Oh, do we have to?
Well, you can cancel the eleventh meeting and call a special meeting on the tenth.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yes.
That would work better.
Well, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't seem that we have any, I mean, we don't have any real pressing issues, right?
So why don't we just do that, just cancel the eleventh meeting and then we'll have a special meeting on the tenth and then we can just, we'll have a big meeting on the twenty-fifth. You can put everything that you would normally put in a meeting in the special meeting, you're just calling it a special meeting, it doesn't have to actually.
I got you.
That's just by, by the terms in the NRS, so.
Okay.
And I think that it's important that we have all the commissioners, there's, there's some budget issues that are gonna be on there that, you know, we need to rereview.
The twenty-fifth I might be able to call in, because I, you know, I might just be sitting at the doctor's office.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So I could try to work that too.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll just pull a special on the, on the tenth.
The eleventh, yeah, that'd be perfect.
So we'll have that meeting on the tenth, okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. Um, anything else?
Nope, that's all I had.
Is there any public comment? We have one person in our public.
I'll, I'll speak to it, like I said, for the record, thanks, uh, the, I very much appreciated the discussion today. And thank for, 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 like I said, explaining.
Yes, what it's all about.
To me, yes.
Okay, all motions for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you guys can.
See you, Ronnie.